All right. Simon.
Okay, it's time I'd like to call the Lemonster Planning Board to order. October 6th, 2025, 6:30 in Conference Room 10. Okay, this is, as Elizabeth said earlier, I think a lot of you people here are for a later part of our agenda. All those are scheduling. We will do nothing tonight. It will come before us. We'll look at our schedule. We take no inputs and we will schedule it. We will schedule the meeting as it's required and we take no information. Okay? It's just a matter of the, it's our procedure. And that way, all the information is available to everybody. If you want to have anything specific, it will be available in the planning office. Okay, with that, I'll get going.
Yeah, would you like me to read the procedures first?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, we have some planning board procedures. I'll just read them into the record. You may be familiar with these because we read them at every meeting now. Welcome, everyone, to the Lemonster Planning Board meeting. This is an official government meeting. We would like to explain the procedure for this meeting before we begin. Public hearings and open public meetings will be open for schedule on the agenda. Once a hearing or open public meeting is opened, the applicant will have an opportunity to make a presentation to the board. Once each applicant has presented, members of the planning board may have questions or comments before we invite members of the audience to comment regarding any applications. Prior to inviting your comments hour, we will read into the record all written comments from individuals who could not be present this evening. Do note that all ones that have been received with no return addresses are not required to be read. We do provide copies to the board for them to take into consideration. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the podium and must state their full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to a two-minute timeframe. Other than speaking at the podium, members of the public are requested not to speak out during the meeting. To avoid redundancy, if a comment has previously been made by another person, you can simply state that you agree or disagree with what was mentioned. Please only speak if you have a new matter to raise for the board's consideration. All comments are to be made through the chairman and not be addressed to the applicant directly. If the chairman would like further clarification, he will ask the applicant directly to respond. Once all public comments have been noted, applications will be discussed individually by the planning board. The board will then vote to either close or continue each respective public hearing or open public meeting. We will then open for our regular planning board meeting. When we reach the applications on the agenda, the board will then vote on all the applications. We would like to ask that everyone ensure they have silenced their phones. We would like to, once again, remind everyone that this is an official government meeting and we ask you to be civilized and respectful and those who cannot may be asked to leave.
Thank you. Okay. Open public meeting, site plan application, the 1030 Central Street.
Yeah, how are you?
That's fine. Everyone, yeah, you guys can stand in front of me too if you want. If people want to stand in front of me.
I think some people. Wait, no. The meeting is getting here.
Yeah, you guys can stand in front of me if you want to. You can come right over here too.
Okay, I know it's crowded, folks, and so.
Also, are we broadcast live?
Right now?
No.
Fire up what you see.
No, we're not. This is taped.
It is taped?
So, yep. Downstairs, it's live, but when it's here, it's taped. Site plan application, the 1030 Central Street. Map 317 Plaza 8, Pine Hill 2, assisted living facility. Please give us some information.
For the record, Chris Anderson, planning and engineering. Here for me tonight for our site plan approval for an assisted independent living facility at what is currently considered 1030 Central Street. Some of the board members might know, remember this place as the Full Forties Bar. The applicant, Pine Hill Street Realty, has purchased the property, is looking to redevelop property to incorporate the assisted living facility. As part of the construction, the existing structure will obviously be demolished in lieu of construction of the new building. Access to the site will maintain two previously approved curb cuts with the MS DOT reconstruction project. The northerlymost entrance is approximately 30 feet wide and will feed directly into the development itself. A secondary 16-foot-wide entrance is located a little further south along Central Street. The intent of the design is to maintain a primary corridor for the tenant's parking configuration and a one-way directional loop that will come as part of the property itself with the 16-foot entrance, if you will, being a one-way exit door. Based on the zoning requirements, we're required to have a total of 22 parking spaces with 22 shown. I will note that there was a typographical error on the calculations on the original, but we will rectify that on further submissions.
So, Chris, once again, the number proposed and the number you have? I mean, how many are required and how many spaces do you have?
22 parking spaces, 22 required and 22 provided. So, the proposed building will have a secondary commercial space. We'll go into it in a moment. But that requires two spaces and the cumulative required parking for the assisted living component is 20 spaces. All in all, the site's experience is a general decrease in the previous area, so there's an improvement over the stormwater condition. We are providing a few catch basins around the site that'll capture the water and directly discharge it into an underground storage system, which has been designed to accommodate all its secondary flows. Sewer and water will make the appropriate connections within Central Street. And all in all, in general, we're moving a fair amount of pavement throughout the site. The area property is located within areas of conservation jurisdiction, so we are taking that into account. That will be filed with the commission for primarily the removal of the existing pavement and the milling and repaving of a portion of the other parts of the site. That being said, as a general civil layout component, I'll hand it over to Peter Bovensey to go over the overall schematic of what the business is looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bovensey.
Peter Bovensey, I'm the applicant. So, this was the Forties Bar. Been there for quite a while. When we originally anticipated what we were doing, we thought they were going to stay. And we kind of worked around them. We made some easements for them and they could park on some of the land we had. And then one thing led to another and then he decided he had to sell it. We had a right of first refusal for the property. We congratulated him on the sale and we expected it to sell. We had no problem. What we thought would happen with this property is that they converted it into a restaurant or something and it would be okay. And we thought it was going to work. But what happened was it was a different use. We did not think it was compatible.
Can you just speak up a little bit more?
We didn't, we didn't think the use was compatible, so we exercised our option to buy it. And then we looked at making it a small addition to what we were already doing. I'm working with Craig Cody and his company. He will have office space. If I, if I, if you look at the floor plan of the first floor.
It don't have floor plan.
It's not as big.
Do you know what page it is?
Uh, it's not on here. It's a, it's a, it's a symbol on the end of it.
Okay.
So, um, you know, when we started Brooks Pond, it was, this is kind of background information. It was 55 and older and maybe that was 15 years ago. And what's happening is that a lot of people living there are getting older and older. And we've got one of these, and I don't want them to leave. So, we're incorporating services to the residents. Services include housekeeping, some, some services that really are social group meetings and things like that to try to make the quality of life better for everybody living there. So, the first floor, the primary, everything on Central Street, faces Central Street, is, is going to be a Better Homes facility. And I'm going to let Craig Cody talk about his company and the brochures that were, were given out. That's what apply to his company. And Craig's been in business for 14.
Yeah, we've been in business for 14 years servicing the community and it's a home health agency. What we're doing right now is we're getting involved with the hospice side of federal home health and certification right now. So, we were looking for a different, we're on Pleasant Street right now, but we're looking for some office spaces that's just more suitable for what we're doing. And we had talked about coming into the community that he has. And I thought that would be a really nice, you know, thing for us. And then when we started talking, it just got more involved where, hey, how about if we start doing programs throughout the community? You know, there's so many people that could, as they're aging, they're going to need more help with laundry or, you know, med, medications, things like that, or, or, you know, showers and things like that. And this is just what we do normal every day with physical therapy, nursing, occupational therapy throughout what we do every single day. We've been doing this for 14 years. We service about 100 patients at any given time. And, and so we just thought that putting this together, having an office in this community and servicing, you know, the people in there, trying to keep them not leaving your, your space and your Brooks Pond and Pine Hill. So, what we thought would be best is putting this program situation together. We're still developing and thinking of what we want to do, but that's kind of the gist of the whole thing and, and.
So, are you going to be, you're going to have an office and facilities in this building?
Correct.
And how many employees will you have in this building?
Uh, we are, really, we might have two at any given time in there. The nurses and the people that come to the office merely typically don't. But if they need certain things for, that they might need bandages or anything like that, that supplies for the patients, they might stop in or grab one of these brochures and books that we give to everybody who starts on with us.
So, you'll be doing that and you'll also be administering it for the people in Brooks Pond out of this office?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
So, what we planned there would be how many people, if we have certain workers, maybe we would start with one or two servicing the community that, you know, people that sign up for programs. And then as it grows from there, you know, we would increase the number of people that go out into the community daily, doing an hour here, an hour there, you know, and things like that.
Okay.
These units are specifically been designed for, one of the things that we've seen, you know, that has been something that's more required. For example, if you look on the design, like the shower is, some, some of them are six by five or six feet. So, the person who's a caregiver can get into the thing and help, help the person. These are, these units have been designed more specifically for some of the people who are really closer on the edge of not being used.
Okay.
We're trying to keep them there as long as they want it to be.
This, this to me is more, a little bit more of a transitional.
Well, would this be assisted living or would this be a?
Yeah, that's been an interesting debate. Assisted living includes independent living within certain services. And I've been listening to this chatter in the background. I'm willing to dialogue with it, but it's, it's absolutely meaningless. Are we, are we against senior housing in Lemonster, assisted living? People who don't need medical care but need assistance? Is that what we're trying to accomplish by all of this, like overspecification?
Yeah, I was just trying to find out.
If you want the methode or the, or the bar and you think it's more appropriate for this community, then that's something you should do. And I'll be helpful. I'll make sure that somebody buys it to do it. My patience has run out. And I've addressed the building commissioner. I've addressed them repeatedly, but I'm not, I'm not going to play the game any longer.
At that point, I'm not.
But I'm, I'm addressing you through the chair.
Okay.
I'm addressing, at 3 o'clock this afternoon, I'm getting emails still from the planning office that are, that are asking for, you know, more and more information before we even have the chance to even present our project. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go away and, and that's up to this board. I'd be delighted to, if I, if we're going to continue to be biased against seniors and they can't be there. That's something that's policy that you want to.
I think we can clarify, Lemonster. Do you want me to clarify?
No.
So, I'm, I've addressed the issue in my book. Everything is there on the table. You see the plans. We met all the requirements.
The questions I had.
And we have one.
I, I directed some of the questions to the board, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, and to the, to the office. I was looking for the definition of assisted living. I don't know what it is.
Well, we have it. I'll read it to you. This is my issue, Mr. Bovensey, is that we have an ordinance that has a definition for assisted living and it states a combination of housing, support services, and healthcare designed to respond to the needs of those who require help in activities of daily living. Such facilities may include common dining and recreation areas and may offer transportation services. Accessory uses may include beauty salons, convenience stores, pharmacies, and similar establishments. It's not that I'm opposed to what you're doing, but I have an ordinance in front of me with a specific definition for assisted living facility.
And you, and you're an attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm reading it the way I'm reading it. That, that's for accessory uses may include. So, okay, let's take those out. I'll take them out. It still says a combination of housing, support services, and healthcare designed to respond to the needs of those who require help in activities of daily living. And I'll stop there. Such facilities may include common dining and recreation areas and may offer transportation services. I, I'm using that "may" as examples of what those support services are.
Well, I've demonstrated that we do supply those services. And I want to, I want to, you know, what was, what I was given today, which is seemingly irritating at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, was the state requirements for assisted living, which have nothing to do with the zoning. But let me, let me read to you what, it, it's, there's a, there's a mass.gov. Mass.gov, assisted living, and it starts off, what is an assisted living residence? I'll go down. Assisted, it specifically, specifically says, do, an assisted living residence do not provide medical or nursing services and are not designed for people who need serious medical care. Most assisted living residents pay privately. Assisted living can help with light housekeeping, which we do, meal preparation, which we do, bathing and dressing. I just told you why these, these ridiculous and loud showers are in the plan. And administering daily and weekly medication. We have a medical provider located in the building. We have answered it. If you want to have any other, you know, this is a use issue and if you feel like it affects the parking or something else, vote your conscience, vote whatever you like. I, because I'm, I'm, I'm just as willing to not do it. I'm at an age now where I don't care anymore. I'm not pretending.
I wanted to bring it up. I wanted people to know the difference between assisted living in a nursing home or a rest home. Okay? Assisted living is something where the people who live there have the capacity to live alone. They don't require assistance all the time. It's assisted. It's a part-time, but people can come in, okay, to provide services. Not necessarily the services on the there. Have to be, but there has to be something, some proviso. And that's why I was asking about the offices, so that they have the communication. It is there that we can follow through. I was also looking earlier in the, in what I was asking was on, it seemed to be a question of parking. And when I, I get, there was zero employees listed in the parking that I, in the paperwork that I originally got. So, I mean, do we have 18 units and zero employees? Or do we have two employees? Do we have 24? You know, what is, and there seemed to be some change or definition or the count of parking. And that's what I was trying to get to is, do we really, what is assisted living? So, we can define it and we know what it is. Number two, I don't believe that there's going to be zero employees, but he's already said that there's going to, they're going to have an office there to cover the rest of Brooks Pond.
I'll direct you to the engineer. Craig, you produce the document.
Can you straighten that out?
All right. So, the commercial space is effectively the, the helping the people in the facility.
Right.
Based on the parking requirements for that commercial space, there's two spaces there right off the bat. The, as was just stated previously, the argument of that commercial space only has two employees at, at the most. All the other employees that come and go are fluctuating. They're not full-time. They're not, they're, they're not sitting there all day waiting for something to happen. They come and go as they please, as based on the occupant's requirements. So, that's why there's a zero employee count on this one.
No, you just said you're going to have an office there.
Yes, they're counted in there.
We're counting, so the commercial space, which is dedicated exclusively to their use, has two employees at any point in time in the building.
Okay, that defined in here was a commercial space there?
The front, the Better Home.
Over here, the Better Homes, okay.
So, that use has two employees right off the bat.
So, that's not in your total count?
That is in my total count. I separate the commercial space from the.
Okay.
So, it's 22, 20 plus 2?
20 plus 2.
Correct. 17 units plus the, plus the office space, plus the office and parking spot?
Correct.
And it is assisted living or isn't assisted living? Is it an apartment building with a home health office in the front or is it an assisted living facility? And what's the parking requirement depending on?
Assisted living facility is based on use. It is an assisted living facility.
It is.
Under the zoning, it is a assisted living facility. That is our intent. If you do not believe that, do whatever you want to do.
Not acting.
Just like I asked for an assisted living facility. If anybody's familiar with what goes on over there, you know, the average person's like 95. And, you know, we're, we're trying to do some, you know, it's interesting, when you, when we went back to COVID and things, when things were going wrong, it was very interesting. And that's when I came up with the idea of this facility, not this particular building, but the idea of doing it right now, was that what was happening was the people were being forced into these group sessions so they could eat. They weren't able to stay independent and they forced them into it. And most of, a lot of them got ill. And their biggest risk of their lives was taken because of that thing. And so, it's, it's much safer and better to do it the way that they voluntarily get to go into the dining facility, voluntarily get to go into the other facilities and on the trips and all the things that we do. And, and, you know, I'm not a managed medical person, but I tend to believe what I, what I hear. And loneliness is as lethal as cigarette smoking in terms of its impact on lifespan. And people need social activities and they need things to do with each other. We have lots of different things there. So, there's two, the two facilities, Brooks Pond is 55 and older, but as I said to you, it's getting older and older. So, the Pine Hill development was to, to focus on the assisted living component, but we are going to, when he talks about the community, he's not talking about all of them. He's talking about the community of people there. I want to say one other little thing. You know, years ago, I had, my family member was getting old and aged and I realized that something needed to be done. And so, what I did was I, I built a thing in my own house and, you know, that would be where this person could be and I could take care of him. And, and what happened was it was very therapeutic for that person that that was there. So, because they, they might not need it now, but when they need it, it's there for them. And one of the things at this development is that, this is a very important component for everybody that's living there because, like, for example, I mean, down in Brooks Pond, we have literally people in hospital beds and we move bathtubs and change then and large showers. And so, I'm building this to fit what the exact need is. I'm bringing in this expert who can do it both private pay and insurance. And we're going to grow, we're going to grow it. It's, it's going to happen whether we want it or not. The people who are living there, they're getting older and we're going to need to provide more and more and more of these services. And frankly, I'm just perplexed, you know, that, that, that something like this is controversial.
No, but I think, I don't think it's controversial. I think we're trying to get, get the, we've had some information that's going to fall to us, right or wrong? Questioning what it is. You know, I, I got to judge that. It's given to me and I take it at face value. And so, I've got to ask the questions to get things, to get the right answer. At the same time, there was a supposition originally, it's just another apartment building. And I want to make sure that it's not an apartment building and, okay, there are going to be.
Assisted living is residential units.
I know.
It's like saying, is a car not a car because it's an electric car?
No.
This is a type of, an apartment building.
It is.
That's what it is. That's what assisted living is. It is a residence.
But I have a problem.
Like that say, to say, is it one thing or another? It is both.
I've got to define it.
It's not, it's not.
You're right.
It's not one or the other. All assisted living units are residential units.
What do we turn up on?
I'm not.
I have the parking requirement if you want that. Institutional uses under that, it's assisted congregant, independent, or retirement living facility is 1.1 space per employee during maximum daily shift plus one for two bedrooms.
So, what's the total?
We asked for that. I'm leaning out.
What does that total do?
So, there's a total of 39 bedrooms in the building, which equates to 19 and a half spaces, 20. Then you have the two commercial spaces required by the commercial use.
So, we need all the climates.
You mean to be quite, okay.
So, what's the issue?
No, let me explain something else, just so you guys are on the same page. Understand how we do these things, just so you understand. So, what happens is the conservation was 200 feet from a river. It's 200 feet from river. That's the line that you see on there. So, what, even though we had originally in the plan many more spaces than were required, we're not able to put those in. We have to return that to green area out of respect for the regulation.
Right.
So, we can't put more than the required spaces because of the 200-foot buffer. We can only put in the required spaces. So, it wasn't a miracle that it's the required number of spaces. It is all the maximum we're allowed to do because of the environmental conditions.
Yeah. No, I don't have a problem with that.
I prefer a more parking. And I have the land to do it, but I can't.
Well, you got to go to conservation.
200-foot river.
Yeah, we're going to meet with.
From that, that the city of Lemonster pumps sewage into. Go ahead. We'll protect it, we'll stay 200 feet away from it, while every single drain on Central Street is injected into the same little river with impunity. Go ahead.
I don't want to.
Who hasn't?
Nice to say, yeah. Boy.
I don't, I don't want to get it. I don't want to get into it.
Your father, my last last December has freed me from being anything.
So, so, are we having a problem with the use for the zoning? Is that the problem?
I think it's great.
No, I'm just trying to say, now, is there a definition?
17 elderly people that are not in agreement.
I'm just trying to define it.
Yeah. I'm trying to define it. It is like.
It's defined, it's been defined.
But isn't.
Whether you agree with it or not, and I don't agree with it, but that's what we have in order.
And that's what I'm doing. I'm doing that, so, you know?
Yeah.
And if you, if you.
I disagree. I don't think you are doing it. I don't think you're doing it. What would you see that should happen? Well, let me ask you this, let me. Just to know.
No, I don't, I, I, you've already made a position. I'm not here to debate you. I'm here to make my presentation.
Okay. Well, the question I got is, Brooks Pond is designed as 55 and over, is that correct?
That's Brooks Pond.
That's correct. That's different. Okay, and that, okay, is there any 55 and over stipulation to this property? Or assisted living could be any age?
It can be any age, but I, I know for a fact that there's probably nobody under the ages 60.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't doubt that.
But I made the law.
I'm, I'm just trying to get the definite, so I have a better understanding, that's all. That's where I am, okay? There's not that, I agree, there's a definite need for it. I see it all the time. And, but there seem to be some conflicts in our ordinance, the way it was written.
I don't see there's a conflict. I think it's a, it's a laudable thing that our zoning allows senior living housing with assistance in, in this area. I think it's a great thing. It's a, it's a beautiful thing. These people will benefit by it. Now, you may not want to provide that benefit. You may, you might say, well, you, they need more medical care. You want them to have more, you know, other things. You want them to conquer it, force them to eating meals together. And that's, that's your position, but that's not what the regulation requires.
That's a, that's a nursing home. In a nursing home, we require a full-time staff.
No, we even, there is.
And economically, it's not.
In the range of assisted living, in the range of assisted living, there is more. In the range of assisted living, in the range of assisted living, there is more stringent requirements. Most of the assisted living facilities do not do it the way we do it. They, and a lot of those, a lot of those, they, they, people are forced into group eating.
Right.
And they're forced into all these, they don't really, they're not allowed to have real independence, they don't, they're not allowed to have a kitchen. They get a microwave oven, you know, they get, but they're a lot further along in the aging process.
Those are health, yeah, yeah.
This is.
And I think that maybe that's part of the future.
And so, that's what I'm, I'm in the, in the section of independent living that I'm allowed to be in, I believe, and I think it's a laudable thing. I think that, you know, when you, when you look at, is the intent of the law, and is the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish? What we're trying to accomplish is an extremely valuable and laudable thing to people who are elderly living in the city of Leamester. And if, if it's, if it's whack-a-mo we're playing on what the word may means this and that, you know, you can have your city, you can have your drug thing would be perfectly done by zoning, or you buy them, you can have them.
No, I don't want to buy them.
Yeah, you can have them.
Now, do we move to the department head comments and try and address those?
Yeah, let me go through the comments then. I can get something.
I haven't heard anybody suggest that what you're trying to do is lawful or not, that that's not an issue.
How, John, you want me to go through them quick?
Yeah, you got them all.
Building, building disapproves as per Article Three, Section twenty-two seventeen, underlying table of uses apartments multi.
Go, go to the, go to the minutes to the meeting that after we addressed it.
Not allowed in commercial.
Time out.
Wait a minute, no, we got Elizabeth?
Can you? Yes, um, since the decision or the building commissioner made comments on for the August eighteenth, um, due date that you just read, he, um, since at the technical review meeting on September fourth, said that the use as proposed meets the requirements of assisted living. And then, just to clarify, I requested the building commissioner put in writing that he finds this acceptable by the city's zoning standards. The city, this, this afternoon, the building commissioner wrote me and said that it does meet the city's standards, but he wants to know that it meets the state's standards, it doesn't, he says it doesn't meet the state's standards. But then we reached out to our law firm to get a legal opinion, and the legal advice that we got said that this could be approved as assisted living as long as the applicant demonstrates that all state requirements are met before certificate of occupancy. So it could be a condition of approval that meets the state requirements.
I wouldn't accept that.
Why did he change his mind, when was that dated?
That was dated this afternoon, the building commissioner flip-flopped.
Yeah, I know.
Rebound.
And we're relying, we're relying on the building commissioner.
All right, is, did anyone else update it since August eighteenth other than him? Were there any other updates since August eighteen?
Just the building commissioner.
All right.
Well, there was a technical review meeting that we were required to attend, and we answered all the questions that were brought up by any department here in the assessment.
So, right here from the building commissioner, it's a split zone, MU one, commercial building is in the MU one district, so a special permit by the planning.
That's a different thing.
Yeah, it's different.
Oh, that's good. All right, um, the board of health says private demo of existing building, uh, they need asbestos and rodent survey. Uh, they don't see a dumpster location on the plan, must be fenced in.
Do you have a dumpster?
And on concrete pad.
So we're gonna, we're gonna put a dumpster onto the site plan, we have some additional space.
They, they did receive the asbestos, and the other, the building department receives them, not the, not the.
That's outstanding.
The building department.
Assessor, the new construction will create a better view of the site, the adjacent property being a sister property, Pine Hill makes this location desirable for the proposed use. The DPW says they need more information, the parking tables do not list any employees, will there be any with employees added? More parking will be required. Conservation appears that a portion of the work may be within two hundred feet of the riverfront area of the perennial stream east of the parcel, applicant should either demonstrate that the project is outside of any jurisdictional resource areas, or prepare filing with the conservation commission. They can also contact me to schedule a site visit. Fire approves. And, um, police approves.
Yeah.
So I, so, can you tell me, this is what you, this is what Hanigan, and, and, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What Hanigan Engineering puts in their narrative. This project will consist of the construction of a new building to be utilized as an independent assisted living facility. The building will have a total of eighteen units consisting of fourteen one-bedroom and four two-bedroom units, along with a portion of the first floor being community space. Additional commercial space will be included on the first floor, intended for a home healthcare tenant, Better Care Home Health, to enhance the overall services of the Pine Hill Independent Living Facility. So can you tell me what that last sentence means?
First of all, did you get a copy of the brochure?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the plan?
Yeah, we have it here.
The actual floor plan, the first floor plan?
Yes.
So you can see where they're located in the building. But, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they have a small office, and then there's two rooms that they have, one's larger and one's smaller. One has a little kitchen in it, and those things, they play cards, people come down, and have little group meetings.
Is that the room that's adjacent to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when we, we did the final plan, we eliminated one unit. So it's seventeen rooms. So the original plan.
Was eighteen.
Eighteen, but when we got all done with it, we decided to, and it's only three stories high, and, uh, and we said we did that, and so we brought it down in height, and we made it smaller. We think the units are actually really good for elderly assisted living. And, and if you look on the floor, the size of the showers, and how these people can then have people come in and help them, they can, you know, I, one of my relatives, you know, we couldn't, even though it was a shower, it wasn't enough room, put the caregiver in, you know, available. So the issue is, um, we design them for this purpose. We put, uh, a healthcare provider that is unbelievably credentialed in the building. They will assist all the people at Pine Hill primarily. And as people in Brooks Pond get older, they'll probably be assisting them as well. Sometimes you can't predict them when you talk, because you might be younger.
Right, well, that's, that's, I just try to bring out the questions so that we answer them all, leaving things outside.
Well, the answer, I mean.
And I wanna make a different definition, a differentiation.
I thought maybe I would get an award, you know, by the city for producing what the state and the federal government has failed to do for the last twenty, thirty, forty years. And the other thing, non-subsidized, all private pay, all private, one, all private finance. This is, not a lot of people doing this, this is almost impossible to do economically. But the people who benefit from it love it, people love it. I would predict that there will be people in this room that will end up living there.
Two bedrooms. Four two-bedrooms.
Four two-bedrooms.
Four two-bedrooms.
Four two-bedrooms. How many bedrooms in total?
Thirty-nine total bedrooms.
Thirty-nine bedrooms.
Two staff?
It's not really, it's really.
Once there's thirty-nine full bedrooms, how, how much staff would you anticipate would be needed to service thirty-nine? Patients, clients?
Whoa.
They don't live there, they don't, they're not staff?
No.
Per se. The most of the people, they're not.
It's, it's home health.
They may not, they may not, it's only a.
It's a great question, it's a great question, it's home.
It's not home health.
They're not in locating the building, they come in, they, they, they come in, they parachute in, they do the bathing, they bring their back house.
Then go to that. So they never like.
And then they might go to a different house somewhere else, and then they come back. But most of their clients, this is the density of the clients is there, that's why we're locating them right in the middle.
I don't understand the definition of assisted living well enough to.
Well, I, I, so this is my, Jason, I don't know if this, this is my question, so say there's somebody in there who's eighty-five years old.
Yes.
And they have a medical emergency at two o'clock in the morning, what, what do they do?
They call an ambulance. Let me read it, let me read it out loud again, it's not for medical.
It's not a medical.
And so then, I, I want you to, I want this to happen, Peter, I want this to happen, but then that's not your assisted living.
It's not medical. Assisted living. No, but, okay, what happens, what happens at two o'clock in the afternoon?
You want me to make an exception for you?
No, it's not an exception, I want you to make an exception to, for you, because I won't be living there, but you, you guys might be.
I'm not gonna live there, if I have to call an ambulance, I'm gonna live around there.
No, it's not, it's not when you're at that stage in life.
It's a nursing home.
Like, what happens is, is that the person needs help, and they, the mother is there, and then the, the son, they want to make sure somebody, some, some things we're doing, just checking off. Like, how are you doing today? Do you need anything? What, what's going on? Like, oh, we're gonna have, um, a concert. Uh, yes, Sunday night, the bus picked everybody up, and they went to the Worcester Symphony Orchestra in Worcester. That's socialization, they come down in the meeting room, I mean, I can't believe they're having this conversation, but they come down in the meeting room, and they all get together, and they talk to their friends, and maybe they have a coffee in the morning, maybe they.
Unsupervised or supervised?
There can be either or, they, we, you know what's happening, they all kind of make their own things. One, one person is involved in the botched league, another person's involved in the gardening, another person's involved, it's totally different. It's, you, you can't find anything like this, and the fact that you think it's a bad thing, you, it's not an exception, it's not an exception. I'm, I'm gonna read it, I'm gonna read it again, I'm gonna read it again, and I'm gonna read it slowly, I'm gonna read it slowly, because, not that I would even have looked this up, but it just happened to be at three o'clock this afternoon, I was forced to look it up. And what is an assisted living residence? Well, let me tell you what it is, this is from the state of Massachusetts, mass.gov. And the question is, I'm gonna read this again, what is an assisted living residence? That's the question. Remember the word residence. Assisted residences, uh, living residents are designed for adults who can live independently in a home-like environment. But, and it goes on to say that the, do assisted living residences, this is the state of Massachusetts, do not provide medical or nursing services.
No.
They do not provide medical or nurse, this is not a nursing home. This is an assisted living facility. Now, in the scheme of assisted living facilities, you have them that are really like nursing homes, almost, an inch away, and then you have some that are just almost like apartments, they're an inch away. But I would, it takes a subjective look, we're providing these services, we know they're gonna, whether you approve this or not, I have him, I am so grateful for him, because we are, people are getting older and older in these, in this development, and I need these types of things, and some of them are, they need, look. He was the first, I'm gonna make up a name, Alan, Alan didn't come down today, what's going on with Alan? Somebody go do a welder's check on Alan, went up there, and, yeah, I mean, it's okay, it was bullshit that somebody did a welder's check on him, but we checked with him, and he really needed it, he didn't take his medication, he was depressed, et cetera. We brought him downstairs, got lunch, he felt a lot better. So, a lot of this, this stuff is going on, we met with another person, we checked on her flowers that she had in her deck, and made sure that she had the things she needed, and then we go to another person, and we have, we actually have a full-time person now that goes from person to person to person and checks on them. Like, and that's within the, within the housing, but that is not a normal, that's, that's an assisted living, we're assisting them. If they need things, we, we help them get them, but we don't provide medical services, and as defined by the state of Massachusetts. I mean, and so if you, if you want it to be something different, fine, I mean, I, I.
I think the problem is, what we've had, is almost every one location I've been, been to, they call themselves, uh, let's pick on manor on the hill, just have to hear it in town.
Yeah, that's more of a, more of a full-blown.
Yeah, that is very.
We're not doing it for that.
Yeah, no, I realize that, but it's still the definition. Definition of assisted living, everybody goes down for dinner every day, and, but there are some people who don't. And they can pick and choose, and, but they pay for it, and they have a full-time nursing staff. But that, that's a full-blown, but this is a minor, let's call it minor assisted living, rather than a full-blown one, but it's still.
I know there's only, we, we may provide this, we may provide that, and sure enough, what's happening, as the people get older and older, we will end up providing everything.
Right.
But, bottom line is that, you know, we're not forcing them, and other than this meeting, I really took very care in trying to be subtle about it, because they don't really want to hear it, the actual occupants.
We did get a legal opinion on August eighteenth too, and that's in my mind.
What's that?
Hey, I've done, we've exhausted this, this is.
Yeah.
We are doing it in circles there, so.
Yeah, we are.
Is there something else?
Can we open up to the audience?
Okay. Does the board have anything else?
Peter, you run other assisted living facilities on your property, does this operation differ from the other?
It's the same, it's part of the same. The Pine Hill group is the assisted living.
Okay, yeah, I'll open up the audience, so have any questions, so anybody from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ashley Silva, two nineteen Harvard Street, are there gonna be security, like locks on the doors? Like fobs to pin in or anything like that for this?
There'll be what?
Like fob, security, like pin codes, keypads for the other, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's, they have locks on the doors.
They're locks on you.
I didn't see the plan, so I don't know.
There are some keypads on common doors, but.
And do the rest.
They'll have their individual locks.
Yeah.
I didn't see the, I didn't see this site, I don't know what it looks like, I'm just looking at this, okay, so I don't know what it looks like. And then, are these residents able to use, like, Brook Ponds, like the walking areas over there and things like that?
Yes.
I don't know, I think this is really nice, and if I had grandma who was still alive, I think this would be something that she would have needed for someone to come to check on her, because she has her own schedule of life, but you know, we couldn't always, I live in Massachusetts, she lives in California, I couldn't just get over there and check on her, but I feel like in Leamester, something like this would be nice to see that someone at least can just like, hey, you okay, do you need anything? But she can still do her own, but, you know, maybe one day she doesn't help.
I think part of the problem comes, we had some initial information, okay, where it was.
It's okay, I just wanted to say.
No, I'm just answering a question. Okay, confusion came from another department that said it wasn't allowed. So, and that didn't get clarified until sometime this afternoon. So, the information the board had, okay, from that individual was that it wasn't, and we're trying to figure out, are we coming through? And we're looking at some other departments, now, we got that clarified this afternoon, so that we could get the definitions. We did know what it is, and we're now, I'm happy with it anyway, the other board will vote the way they want. So that's, that's part of the, part of the confusion that we had, because of the initial information we had was incorrect. Okay, so we ferreted it out to get the correct information. Do I have anyone else that has a question? Uh, this lady right here.
Yeah, just a quick question about the nurses, so I know that they're just gonna be kind of coming, oh, Chelsea Madison.
Name please.
Sorry, Chelsea Madison, sixty-five Harvard Street.
Okay.
With the nurses, I know they're gonna be floating, but say you have like, I don't know, ten residents that need showers at around seven PM, I guess it goes to some of the questions of how, you know, if you only have a couple nurses, are you gonna have them just floating to each person within like a two-hour timeline?
I think we're getting into a detail that I'm gonna.
No, I wanna, I wanna hear your question.
Yeah, I had it.
Sorry, sorry.
I think all that would just be scheduled, I mean, throughout the day, and, you know, if the, if there's two girls, you know, servicing the, the area, then the girls have time slots for Sarah and Jane and Bill and things like that, for whatever they might need to do. Maybe Bill just wants to go for a walk, you know, and get out, and that's what he was saying about someone just having a good, good day, not sitting in home all day, you know, you, you get them out, and anything like that's a positive thing.
I think it's a great idea, I was just wondering, it's not a waste.
Okay.
Your staff, are, are they nurses, are they?
It's all nurses, um, the, the girls that would be doing this or guys, they're more personal care services.
What are their qualifications, certifications?
Yeah, they have, they're, they're just certified for personal care, house cleaning, like.
They're, they're registered, they're.
Yeah, but we have nurses available as well for anything that might be, you know, I mean, the nursing part watches over and manages all that the personal care people do anyways, they have to be managed, and the nurses will send them out, schedule them throughout the day. So they're always in touch with the nurse. So if some, I know we opened up to the audience, but I have a question, so say somebody wants to, I want, you know, my father's passed, but since he, I, say he's, you know, eighty, ninety years old, because I don't want to age anyone.
Who picked me, I don't know, yeah.
And I want, and he, and he's like a very healthy, older person, but I want him to live there independently. How does that work? Are you gonna interview him, find out what his needs are? I, um, or does, I just put down a deposit and say, my dad's gonna live here, he's eighty-five years old? I think it would be more so, what would he like our services to do for him, you know? I mean, if there was a medical emergency or anything like that, I mean, you, anybody would just dial nine-one-one. You know, I mean, if there was a medical emergency or anything like that, I mean, you, anybody would just dial nine-one-one, you know, and, and call an ambulance and have people, you know, have that circumstance. But I mean, if, if in the morning, we're reaching out to Bill and saying, uh, how, how's the morning going? Are you up? Do you need anything today, this morning? That type of thing. Knocking on the door, seeing how they are. Do you wanna get out? Do you wanna schedule anything? Do you need any laundry done? Do you need food? Do you need anything? And is that included in the, in the price of the rent?
No.
Or it's all, or it's all, it is all part of the thing?
So, they'd, they'd have to ask for anything that they want and then they have to. But they can ask for any.
Do the.
I would like to get.
I think because they're larger rooms and because of their, I, I would say they fit the, the areas more, you know, these more so than one of your smaller units. So yes, that's what we're looking for, you know? Maybe we're reaching out to Brooks right now and seeing who fits the need for more, you know, need, you know? I mean, before they maybe would move out and live with their son or daughter.
You can have a waitlist, you know?
Let me, let me answer another question. So you asked about the two bedrooms. So two bedrooms can be, sometimes it could be two, these spouses, and one is more needing in care than the other. And the other thing is it could be the caregiver that is there during long hours or something. So there is a small demand. And, um, and they function, like, what I ended up doing in the design was, I named them all so that the doors opened up from the second bedroom into the living room. So that you could get stretchers or whatever you wanted to get in the bed. We have one person, I didn't, we have hospital set, um, already. So, as these things get more and more involved, one of the things I wanna clarify, I said we, we don't offer, we don't require nursing services, but he has the capability through all the insurance company, things, insurance authorization, Medicare, Medicare, fully licensed for everything. And he will oversee that now and then. And as people in the beginning, they may not use very much of all of the services and then they use a little bit more and more and more. And then, then at some point they have to go to a nurse, but we're not capable of, they, they make the decision. We don't make the decision.
Do I have anyone else that has any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Not so much a, I'm sorry, Liz McCarola, 75 Harvard Street. It's not so much a question as a comment. Um, I really appreciate the applicant coming here and presenting this project to the city. I think this is a great example of smart group. He's renovating an existing building, so he's not adding to a carbon footprint. He's respecting the reparian boundary with a two-hundred foot bumper. He's providing a really needed service for our city and its residents that we all know we need. And I really wish he had gotten hold of the Archer, Porter Hill, Art, Art building. I'd love to see this.
This is like one of the good things that Peter Pevensy has done, okay? In the thirty years I've been.
Only one of them.
I just got your order.
I would still need any other one. I, I respect that you've had questions and that you've worked to get to the answer of them. I would just say that I think everyone around the table has been clear that you're for this kind of development. If our local ordinances are not in support of something that we all know is a great thing for the city, should we maybe review them and make sure that we are supporting the things we know are great for the city instead of rejecting them?
Well, we, we try to update audiences, but we can't, it's a real task. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Do I have any?
I just have a quick statement. Um, my husband, some of you know him, Brendan Moses, eight Bridgewood Circle.
Okay.
Um, luckily we can have our own home right now, but this would be the perfect situation for my husband to have a stroke. I can't work because I have to be with him. But if we lived there and he had these services that were able to come to him with PT, OT, and, you know, showering and, you know, do you need it? That would be outstanding because then I can work, right? So we're not down to one income. So I think this is perfect. I think we need more of these.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely. It's not just about the eighty, ninety-year-old people, you know, he's sixty, sixty-two, right?
Well, that, that's what, I asked that question earlier.
Yeah.
On the age.
This is great.
And, and, uh, because Brooks Pond is fifty-five and over.
Yeah.
But there's an alternative to that, which they can allow.
This is great.
So, so you would try to get all of the information, is that it wasn't just restricted to older people. Because I realize there are young.
This is definitely helpful, like the spouses and the kids and, you know, trying to take care of that loved one, right? So, that's a huge, huge thing.
Okay, I'd like to move on. Um, do I have anyone else? Okay, see.
There's somebody, no, somebody.
I just, I think I saw on hand.
Um, Tia Fletcher, 365 Falcon Drive. Uh, knowing the limited education PCA's do receive compared to nurses, registered nurses is, how, uh, how quick would the availability of a registered nurse be? Should someone have an issue?
I can't.
Well, um, my wife, who is the head of a company as well, she's a nurse and, and she runs all the nurses and physical therapists and everybody, um, in their, their assignments every day. So if there's a direct need for such a thing, an emergency type of thing like that, I mean, my wife would end up being the one probably going. But, I mean, the first thing you, you definitely do is, um, also you can, you call your physician, make sure, you know, you're gonna get help that way as well and the correct, um, plan of care, all, you know, circling that, what, what, what they're gonna need. But, um, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, it just comes down to, like I said, I mean, once we have it all worked out, the nurses manage the PCA's. So if there's something that the PCA is seeing, hey, I think you should come up here and see, you know, Bill, then that would definitely happen. Definitely happen. My PCA is actually trained.
Uh, 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 no, sure. Sorry.
Yeah. Um, what's the proposed name of the facility? Do you have one?
Pine Hill, Spider Pine Hill.
I'm going to close the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to, to close the hearing. Any further discussion during, and I'll go up for the vote. All the favors say aye? Aye. Vote say no, votes encourage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will discuss this later on in the meeting. Six thirty-five, over public hearing for special permit application for four eight eight Main Street, map two four one, parcel one, scrap metal recycling.
Do we have any representatives for four eight eight Main Street here or are they outside?
Do I have a representative?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, you considered moving downstairs?
No, we can't because it's advertised for here.
I understand, yeah, I understand that, but you have people in the hall that can't hear.
Can you move us downstairs, please?
No, I can't do, I can't do it, customer. I can't do.
This is our regular room. This is our regular room. We didn't anticipate this crowd.
I didn't, I can't anticipate the crowds, so I'm sorry. I, I can't, I have to advertise when my meeting's on. And my meeting was advertised for this room. I don't have a choice.
Well, we're not going to.
Okay.
No. If a question comes up, I can, I can draw something.
Sure. So, uh, should I start?
Here, are we ready for the applicant?
We're ready.
Okay. Your votes are on.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, my name is Donald O'Neil, I'm from Worcester. I'm here this evening, um, connecting with this. Application for, um, Massachusetts Scrap Metal Recycling. With me is Iris Zelitsky, who's the principal in this business, and this is a physically, um, a newer venture for him. Uh, although he, his family and he himself, uh, throughout his life, has been involved in the scrap metal business since nineteen sixteen. So, um, they do have some good deal of experience, um, in terms of, um, the work that they're doing. Uh, what we're proposing at this location, um, requires a special permit. Um, and I understand that there is a site plan, um, in place for the existing businesses that are located in that situation. And what we're doing is we're not, uh, we're using the existing facility and the existing parking that exists there. We're not, um, building any structures or anything of that nature. So, uh, we were told that the site plan will not be required, um, because it's already, it's already one in place.
The building is, the parking exists.
And if you wanna see.
It's a used permit.
Sure, yeah. And if you wanna see what it looks like, you, you just go up and drive around. Um, and, um, our plan would be to utilize the existing space that was previously used and laid by an electrical contractor.
Right.
Um, and, uh, physically, the only thing that, uh, we would probably be doing is adding some fencing, um, around, uh, our space uh, for the storage materials. Uh, we would also would be, um, installing security systems, uh, lighting and mostly the security system, I think minimal lighting in terms of the, you know, the area.
Exterior area.
Secure area, yes. Um, so I had gone through the, um, conditions of approval, um, specified for a special permit. I believe there are twelve conditions. And I did, uh, submit a response to those. Um, I can, if you wish, go through those twelve, um, conditions, um, you know, if, if that supports desire or if there are any particular ones that, um, you feel that, um, you'd like to hear more on, then we could, we could do it that way as well. But, um, do you have a preference?
I think that, that, well, for myself is, um, is the concern is I was reading things for, um, the requirements you have for covered materials.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and your requirement for what kind of traffic, because that's a very busy, uh, traffic. I think the company was there before, they repaired motors and stuff like that, and it was little or no traffic coming out of there.
Yeah, uh, and I did, that, that's, I think, um, your focus is, is pretty much borne out by the departmental responses that we received where most of them were, uh, pretty much all of them were, uh, didn't, uh, have any, uh, objection or would approve of what was.
Concerned.
Police Department, um, I think probably had, uh, the most comments in terms of.
But they left there in traffic.
So, um, the, um, issue with the, um, right turn only coming out of the facility, uh, i- if that is, um, a condition of approval, uh, that the board feels they wish to impose, then we, we will not object to that. I mean, we have no objection to it.
We, we had, just to give you some background, just further up the street, uh, there's a car wash. And years ago, we had a right turn only on that. So in that same area, we have other right turn only.
Yeah.
Locations.
Yeah. No, I mean, we, we, um, um, uh, understand that, that there's a concern for that and it, the, in terms of, I did read the comments from the police department and they, um, uh, you know, explained how, how it could happen with the, with the left turn in terms of someone flagging you on and, uh.
And running to it.
Yes. Um, so I, I actually had it myself, uh, in my own car at a different location, but it, it can happen. And if it's something which, um, has happened there, um, this would seem to be a good way to, uh, eliminate that option.
What about the covering materials?
Now, covering materials, um, we would, uh.
So my, I'll just put this, let's put it over there. How are you gonna get the notice out to your customers, uh, let's say me, happenstance as a homeowner, and I wanna bring something down? How do I know, or how are you gonna, do you get that information off, like, what your requirements are for covering material?
Yeah.
Or you just cover state requirements?
Well, there, there are requirements, but of course, some, not everyone follows the requirements. But, um, in our website, in terms of, most people, um, well, well, not most people, but a, a fair number of people, I think, might locate you through, uh, you know, a website, which is more, um, kind of the way people find everything these days. Um, and that would, would specify that, you know, all the loads have to be properly covered, um, in order to be, you know, accepted with delivery. You know, if you, if you have, um, somebody there, uh, that comes and they haven't done it, um, the, um, would you tell them it wouldn't take anything in the future if, um, you know, if it's not properly covered, don't, don't come back again. Um, and I did, um, uh, so I, I mean, that's, that's, um, and, and we would, to the extent that we're dealing with repeat customers, uh, and a, a lot of the anticipated people bringing, uh, scrap would be contractors, um, you know, people that.
That was my next question. You, are you expecting a homeowner's, like an old refrigerator, uh, dryer, or are you talking about, uh, contract materials?
It, it, it could be a little of both, but, but predominantly it would be, um, you know, let's say, uh, 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 a contractor.
Will we buy?
I, I'll handle this one.
Sure.
I'm Ira. Thank you guys for having me here. Um, the, we would not be set up to take any, anything really for that. Um, we would, we would accept it so long as it is, uh, you know, draining freon and any oils and anything hazardous, things like that. There's certainly rules in place for that, um, that require you to have licensing and things like that, and we would be doing any of that on-site.
Okay.
We were not gonna have big piles of iron and big excavators and things like that. As a result, we imagine that our, our white goods, as they're called, uh, business will be minimal. Uh, people who just wanna get rid of it as opposed to, um, do it for a living and, and even wanna sell it for top dollar to a guy who's gonna crush it with an excavator and a big pile of iron, which we're not gonna do. Uh, we expect that the majority of the volume coming in will be, uh, electricians, plumbers, contractors, uh, construction people, uh, people who do this for a living. Uh, you know, there will be the odd homeowner who's cleaning out his basement or did a, a do-it-yourself project, um, but we expect that to be relatively minimal.
Okay, will you have any, uh, outside work?
No.
It'll all be internal, the building?
The only, the only outside work will be the bulk material. So like, we'll have a few containers set up, um, for, you know, which, which will be the, the dumpster for RCO scrap and dumpster for perhaps an aluminum scrap, um, and there will be, you know, processing as it were outside. But some of the.
The excavator crushing.
No, 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 none of that, none of that. There's no room for that, neither do I want that.
I know, I was just.
No, 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 we're.
On loading and separating is happening outside or inside?
Inside, inside. Everything is weighed inside, everything is processed inside. The only thing that will happen outside is, um, when the material is ready to be put away, um, we would dump some of the steel scrap into the steel dumpster and then when that's full, that gets hauled away and by, uh, to be delivered to somebody who's gonna consume it and they'll replace it with, with an empty. But as far as real segregating of materials and, and, and processing, none of that will happen outside.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I was gonna say is that there, there's also a combat, there's no precious metal of any kind, so it's not, it's not a long shot, okay?
It's not a question.
There are strict rules about what we can accept and what we can't accept. Um, obviously, anything stolen, anything that, that is likely to be stolen. Uh, if something says Town of Leominster and it's a sewer grate, it's probably stolen, right? Uh, if it's a brass cemetery plaque, uh, it's probably stolen. So, and certainly things that are hazardous, radioactive, uh, uh.
Right.
You know, there's strict rules about.
You operate a similar facility today?
It's, it's a scrap mill yard. It's a little bit different. My facility in Holden does not deal with the public. Um, we buy from the people that deal with the public.
Okay.
So it's a little bit different, but it's in the same general, uh.
And where is that located?
Uh, it's in the Holden industrial park.
In Holden, oh, okay.
The other thing is the, uh, he is required, um, by law to gather, uh, you know, identification from anyone who does make a delivery. Um, keep record, keep a log of that so that if there is, um, you know, something goes missing and the police wanna look around to see where the aluminum siding went, um, he would have that information and, and has to maintain that. Um, with respect to the traffic, um.
In regards to that, it's, it was part of the comments that the police made, so take copies by these, traceability. In regards to that, it was part of the comments the police made, so take copies by these, traceability, things like that. That's all the great two thing, right, that happens.
Yeah, but that's all legal requirements, I believe, by the state.
And naturally, policy against stolen stuff, or the markers, right? Any other type of stuff was there, proof, proof of sale.
Right, if somebody has a letter from the cemetery saying, you know, that this is damaged, it needs to be replaced, then yeah, but if, 'cause somebody, you know, Joe Schmel comes with a cemetery plaque, and I don't think I want it from them. It could happen.
Yeah.
It happens.
Okay, do I have any other questions on the board? Oh, yes.
Imagine most deliveries would be in smaller trucks.
Yes.
Of once a week, you have lots of trucks coming in.
Yes.
For the lots of trucks to turn around, so they don't have to back in or back out onto the highway?
Yes, the expectation is that there will be five, two-axle vehicles an hour. That'll include, you know, cars and contractor trucks and some stray jobs perhaps. The real tractor trailers will be maybe once or twice a week. There is, the yard at the, at 48th and Main Street is pretty large, and I've already coordinated with landlord about how we can arrange his parking and everything else so that there's plenty of room to turn around.
Difficult to locate.
Yes, yes, the building we're planning on operating is a full three hundred feet back from the street line. So it's way back there.
Okay, how much of that parking lot is yours?
Covered loads would, you know, more than commercial.
Yeah.
Because if I bring a refrigerator down, it's not gonna fall on the highway.
I should know that. I would imagine most people will have, you know, vans or trucks or.
If it's some loose pieces, and those would probably be mostly contractors.
Yeah, those are most, right, and they should know that. And if they don't, they're not the type of people I want as customers anyway, 'cause they're a hazard to everybody.
Okay, I'll open up to the audience, do I have any? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Ashley, I live at the Ashley Parsons, Fifty River Street. I actually live right behind your questionable facility, so I have a question. So I have a one-year-old and a growing family, and I'm a registered nurse. And my questions are, all this scrap metal with fumes, there's been evidence-based practices that is saying that that can cause development of the case. I work with older populations that I see when they work within scrap metal. There's a lot of respiratory illnesses, COPD, SDC. My question is, with my one-year-old, what are you going to do with the, first of all, the fumes? But we live on Nashville River, so you're only twenty yards from it. All this scrap metal flying, is it going to fly into the river? And we've had problems with pollution, we fixed that, so like, one bad gas spill, scrap metal spill, that's going to do. Causes a lot of pollution, and I'm just curious if you have any ideas for how you're trying to handle that?
Sure, that's a great question. The, all the process will be done inside, and there will be no plasma torching, no melting, no anything that's gonna cause anything to go. It's all gonna be mechanical shearing and then hand sorting and moving with the forklift and all that.
Yeah, you didn't say that you're going to dump scrap metal into bins outside.
Yes.
The property's on the river.
Yes.
So my question is, how do you guarantee, what if someone misdumps and goes straight into the river? I mean, you can't really collect that right off of the river.
Yeah, so when we're going, we have earmarked where we're gonna place the bins, the bins are gonna be really, I mean, they're gonna, if it's, if something, so, you know, the bins are gonna be, you know, twenty feet away from the river, it's gonna be dumped from a forklift, from a bin into the other bin. And, you know, there's really a very, very, very small chance that anything's gonna go fly.
And then do you have a question of the actual parking lot? Because for my house, it doesn't even look like there's room for two axles to do a car.
Sure, if you even look at it from Google Street View, you can barely see the building behind it. It's literally three hundred feet from the street.
Oh, you can totally see it, and it's in the speedway parking lot, so.
It's next to the street.
But it's connected to it, so like, my question is with traffic, I mean, the intersection.
Okay, direct your questions to the board, or make it, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, so the, where the intersection is, we have the new car wash, which is lovely, but it causes so much traffic. We also have the new apartment buildings up more. So with that intersection, when I, I actually work overnight, so I'm very lucky, I miss rush hour, and I still have to hit the stoplights for twenty minutes. So my question is, with all of this traffic and all of these cars coming in, I mean, the infrastructure is not even designed. The electrical company, they do HVAC, I've never even seen cars there when I'm home, and I'm home all day long. So I mean, with all these people coming in, I mean, there's not even a stoplight there, so that's gonna cause congestion with the gas station, cause congestion with the road itself. I mean, my street's a one-way, so all that traffic also. I mean, are people going to come through my street? I mean, all the noise, you just said exterior lights, I have a one-year-old that's nursery facing directly towards your building. I mean, how far are these lights, are they going to heat my baby up? I mean, your building's only like sixty yards from my house, sixty-four yards to be exact. It's very close, and I'm just worried about the scrap metal, I mean, that's gonna affect my family and.
Are you on River Street?
Yes.
I missed your address earlier.
You can actually see my baby swing set, it's directly about fifteen yards from the river. So I live right on the river.
If you're building the one on the front or the back?
Mine building is the one that abuts the river.
The one in the back?
It's right there. We did, we did have a traffic study done, which shows that there's no adverse effect on traffic, so there's.
And did the Nashville River Association get a hold of it to prevent you?
No.
There's definitely river laws that say you can't have any runoff.
The, that would be the Conservation Commission, and they would determine, but seeing as the buildings exist as they are today, they don't change in the parking lot, or the current drainage is the same, and where most of it's gonna be inside buildings, they're not required, that's not required.
And then my question is for long-term liability, when this causes health impacts on, if it's a residential area, who's responsible? Who's taking the lawsuit?
I didn't hear the question.
For the long-term liability, for the health impact that this is going to cause, I mean, pollution, we all know, there's like multiple studies about it. Who's taking the lawsuit?
Yeah, so I think there's some confusion again about what we're doing there in terms of, there's no melting or any type of,
runoff.
Anything of that nature, there's no melting down metal bars or anything of that nature. There's no smoke, there's no, you know, fumes, there's really.
There's nothing, it's inert.
Metal, like this case here, is gonna be dealt with, if this is a.
Not a processing facility.
Commercial area, it's not a processing facility, it's not set up for that. We did get comments back from the Conservation Commission, and they said that, you know, they don't really have any jurisdiction over this, but aside from that, there is naturally, there's a buffer area around wetlands that you can't, you know, violate. We're not, and we're not, we're not, we have no plans to do that. It is, if you look at the Google map photograph, I mean, it shows kind of a wooded, existing wooded area along the edge of the river, which is not in any way being impacted. We're not gonna be discharging anything to the river or anything of that nature. And the, in terms of the traffic situation.
Enough is enough.
The location, we did have a traffic report here. The location is, the actual, the streets can accommodate, clearly accommodate this additional traffic, which is not really significant when you consider how many cars walk down the street again, you know, as it is today. And we did submit a fairly lengthy traffic report that confirms that, not just us saying that.
Right.
And feel that the, you know, we're not gonna be a, you know, in most cases, people won't even know you're there.
And the Health Department did review this.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't do the Department.
Yeah, the Board of Health, yeah.
Just the Conservation said something about only physical changes, installation of fenced area adjacent.
Yes. Yes, so.
Now, is that gonna be an additional buffer to the river?
No, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be adjacent to the river. It's gonna be segregating more my property from the parking lot, sort of, if you look at it like that. As far as the river is concerned, there will be barriers to prevent, you know, cars from going over if they're not paying attention, things like that. There is, you know, there is a bank there that goes to the river, we don't want anything, anybody going into the river. We're trying to make it as safe and secure as we can from that perspective and from the environmental perspective.
That does improvements to the parking area as it stands today.
I'm sorry?
That's an improvement to the parking area as it stands today.
It is a slight improvement to the parking area as it stands.
Because you're providing that buffer to the back of the, I mean, you know, they're not.
To the area, yes.
Should we get the rest of the Department's comments on that?
Okay, I had one other young lady right now.
Friend of Moses, Abridgewood Circle, I know that you say that nobody will pretty much know you're there, but when you're dumping metal into a metal container, that's gonna be a lot. And I have a best friend that grew up on River Street, and it was a nice quiet neighborhood, I love my quiet neighborhood. That's gonna be a lot, and I know you're referring to Google Maps. The Google map for my house is eleven years old, so you might wanna check into that.
But the building's been there for a couple of months.
But just so everyone is abutting that area or around that area, they can have the knowledge. But the metal going into a metal container, they're gonna know you're there. And if people work from home, or if they have a one-year-old, then that's, they're gonna hear all day, and that's not okay.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yes, so William Parsons, Fifty River Street.
You've identified that.
Yep, William Parsons, Fifty River Street.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Just kind of going off that, like they mentioned that they're gonna be adding a lot of exterior lighting. Kind of what are the hours that you're gonna try to plan on doing this, because you're gonna be putting in metal, you know, all day? Having exterior lights kind of identifies that you're gonna be doing this in the nighttime as well, or early in the morning.
Let me answer that, wait a minute, but the city has a code on lighting, so anything in an area where there has to be zero to the light to the adjacent property. So what they have, what they have for lights will be for their parking lot, and I'm not sure what their plan is, but the city has a zoning code that dictates that. Okay, I don't know what their plan is.
Kind of continue my question, you know, what hours do you try to plan on operating this? Is it weekends, is it all day, like?
Answer that.
Sure, our hours are gonna be seven to four on weekdays and seven to one on Saturdays, which is pretty standard procedure. We're not gonna have any off-hours every afternoon, midnight, and the lights are gonna be there purely for security. I'm not gonna point them in all directions and try to make anybody uncomfortable.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Well, any ordinance that's got stuff from having to.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Friend of Moses, Abridgewood Circle.
So the lighting, the lighting ordinance that the city has, you know, they have to be in a certain direction. You can't spill light into rubber adjacent properties.
But the way the building is faced, that garage is facing my house.
But they're gonna have to aim everything down.
Indirectly going to my house, though.
Yeah, but they'll aim it down, they have to aim it down.
Right, but my house is only sixty-four yards from where this is being, so indirectly, I will be getting light from my house.
Ambient.
Ambient light. Yes, ma'am, you had your question.
So at seven AM, can people pull up and dump, or are you gonna wait until they can dump until nine?
Well, nobody is going to dump except for us. We are going to receive the material.
Right, so, so you're only gonna dump your material from like, a certain time to a certain time. You're not gonna start at seven AM when the people that have babies are sleeping and stuff.
We're gonna start receiving at seven AM, and then when the container is full, we're gonna dump it.
I just have another question, so you said that this is gonna be done all internal? Do these people pull into the garage internally and drop off everything, or is this gonna be dumped outside in the parking lot?
Nothing can be dumped outside, there's nothing on the ground at all, no metal on the ground at all.
Right, but how, so how are you gonna manage if it's all internal, people doing drop-offs daily, you said.
They're gonna drop off, that's the overhead door, and it's gonna go inside. The only exception is when it's going to go into one of the bulk containers outside, in which case, we will already have it embedded inside, we will take it to the dumpster, we will dump it, and that'll be that until it's time to do it again.
Got a last question, ma'am?
My question is to lead us, so you said that there's no breaking down any chemicals, you're breaking down metals, so that's, are you guaranteed that those metals don't have run?
I can guarantee what metals have led and what metals do not, yes. But there is, we're, the amount of breaking down that we're gonna do is very, very minimal. There's no, we're not torching anything, we're not melting anything. If anything, we're taking a giant sitter to it. So there's really nothing that's gonna be done, any processing to expose anything to anything.
Somebody, oh, okay, go ahead.
I'm Mitch Jordan, I'm actually there, David, at fifty-six River Street.
Okay.
And we've got a clear view, I'm sitting on my deck eating dinner, we can already see the whole facility now, with leaves. Been there thirty-five years, it's a nice, that's the nice, quiet part of my yard, because River Street's very good at this end. We enjoy our backyards, this lighting and dumping of that metal, whether it's once or twice a day into those, is ridiculous to have in a neighborhood. How many people here show hands are from River Street? Exactly.
Is there anyone in the hallway?
Any of y'all's out there from River Street? And you don't hear?
River Street, right over here.
The whole hallway is full, I mean, this is a cup against all of our properties, which we used to see bald eagles, deer, beautiful. The lighting and the noise alone, it's in a residential neighborhood. What do we need this in this part of Leominster, boy? We don't. There's enough people here to justify it, we don't want it in our neighborhood. The noise, lighting, and pollution, not to mention traffic. It's brutal for us to get out of our street now. Ruth, that's who tried us stopping River Street from taking a left-hand, and remember that, maybe two years ago, they proclaimed of no left-hand curbs. So we were forced to take a right. This has been an ongoing battle, and I just feel adding one more, how many trucks you said are gonna be coming and going all day? And you can't guarantee there's not gonna be fifty or a hundred residents going in there, plus the big trucks. It does not need to be in this little area. It's right up against half properties, and when the leaves fall off, we get a perfect shot over there. There's a little bit of light in there now, it's never been a problem. I see the lighting, it goes up the security cameras, whether it's pointed at the ground or not, you're gonna have a bounce off, it's gonna be everywhere. My whole back of my house is gonna be lit up also. I'm definitely opposed to it.
And so with that, I didn't realize the number of people that were outside, Mr. Chairman, so I make a motion. And now that I know there are River Street people, I thought anyone who was in the room was in the room earlier, so I make a motion that we do go downstairs.
Chair, we're ready.
Oh, it is.
Are we ready?
We left off with the gentleman at fifty-seven River, fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven River, yeah.
And now that we're in the council chambers, when you speak, can you come to the podium?
Yeah.
So Mitchell Jordan, it's fifty-six River Street, been there approximately thirty-five years. Love my quiet backyard, it's nice and dark. We don't need that light pollution, and I've done a bunch of scrapping over the years, I've seen these dumpsters. What makes your dumpster any different than everybody else is it doesn't gotta leak. I've seen them, they leak, the stuff leaks, it's gonna go on the ground, whether it's on your floor inside or on your floor outside. My concern is light, noise, how many trucks do we say we're gonna be coming hourly? How many trucks?
About five vehicles an hour.
Yeah, and that's gonna be all day, including on Saturdays, which has been a nice, quiet neighborhood. I just don't think it needs to be in a neighborhood that close to a river, with all my neighbors here, that don't appreciate it. It's light, it's noise.
Yeah.
That's the better side of our yard, I've been there thirty-five years, I see bald eagles down there, deer, bobcats. I wanna be able to continue to see that. With your lights, even if you face them down, listen, I can still see a little bit of light that's over there now, and that's not bad. I can only imagine what's the height of these lights gonna be, even if they're facing down. We're up above it, see, we're up here looking right down on them. So how high would your lights have to be for us not to interfere with us and our normal everyday living?
They would probably be on a building, that'd be great.
We would certainly do what we can to ensure that whatever lights we have are enough for security, but not more than that. They're aiming down, they're not gonna light pollute the area for, you know, hundreds of feet. And we'll do what we can, obviously, look at a lighting engineer if we need to involve to make sure that we're not, we're being as intrusive as little as possible.
You've got a river right there, the light's gonna bounce off that river and come right up to us.
This is Chairman, I was gonna say, you can get a photometric plan by a light engineer that basically guarantees there's no spill over. And, you know, we are happy to do that, don't really see how, I'm looking at number fifty-six on the assessment plan that I have, and it seems to be a little bit upriver from if the number fifty-six is, it's attached to the application. On River Street, fifty-six, it appears to be. On River Street, uh fifty-six uh is not, is, appears to be uh you know, uh, just before the bend in, in the river. And the river is the separation between this property and River Street. Um, and also with respect to the zoning, the property is not zoned residential. It's MU one and commercial, split zone. Um, it, it's right on Main Street. It's in a commercial area. Uh, you know, within close proximity to the off-ramp and uh from Route Two. Um, and there is, so, so the area is, is not residential, um, which obviously the board understands that. Uh, and we do have the separation of the back of the building and the buffer zone, and then the river, and then the backyards. Um, and in terms of lighting, uh, that's certainly something which um can easily be addressed by a light engineer.
Yeah.
If they're willing to do that, we should make that a condition of approval, that they bring it.
Well, I, I think that the, we have a couple of options that I, I'm sort of thinking of right now. Because we don't have a site plan, and it may be prudent to say, hey, because of the sensitive nature, that we request, that we continue this and we request a site plan. Uh, number one. The second would be to uh the board itself uh to schedule a site walk. And where we'd actually go to the property and take a look at the property. And, you know, cause I've, I've been back there once years ago and I really don't remember what's back there, to tell you the truth. So, um, and, and it is, I don't know without looking in the book. I'm not sure River Street is, uh, I would gather that River Street is residential B.
Right, we have, we have one cup, one little factory next door that does.
Yeah, I know, so we have, we have a problem. We have a mixed, mixed zone there of residential properties bordering industrial property. And the industrial property has been there, I don't know, a long time.
Right, long before me. I've been there thirty-five years.
Yeah.
My neighbors have been all along.
And there've been a number of businesses in there, uh, so because of the nature of the business, being a scrap business, requires a special permit.
Right.
Um, so we're trying to accommodate that and to, to get things done properly. So I'm, I'm a little, you know, I have some options and, you know, one of those is to continue, you know, two, both would be uh to continue it and have a site walk so we can visually see what, what we're looking at. And ask for a, and the second would be, uh, because of the sensitive nature, uh, request a, a, a site plan.
So a special permit.
Uh, for this property and uh due to the nature, it is a special permit, which we can do. And, and then that would require the, a lighting plan also.
Could I, could I make one more point? I'm a hundred ninety-six yards from your property.
Excuse me, I have to address your question first.
I'm a hundred ninety-six yards, which is a picture I could show you from my deck, if, if I, if I may show you. Would I, would it be allowed to show you? This is a picture from my deck. He's telling me it doesn't directly affect me. That's what, what leaves right now. Clearly, it's a hundred ninety-six yards. I'm sitting on my deck eating dinner and looking at the scrap. Right, he's right here. This is his building, his parking lot. This is looking right off my deck. When he says it doesn't directly affect Fifty-Sixth River Street, it most certainly does.
Can I mitigate it with some buffering?
You would have to put a fence up there or something. I mean, we're up on it. We're looking down on it.
Yeah, looking down on it. That's why I'm saying I have.
That's what.
If I may.
Take a look at a site walk.
If I may, can I, can I ask what information you'd hope to glean from a site plan? Site walk, I understand. But the site plan, can I ask what information you'd hope to glean from a site plan? Perhaps I can address that right now.
Uh, yeah, setbacks and uh, and, and you'd have to go to, you know, you'd have to give us a uh a lighting, an impact lighting. Yeah, well, you're often to do that anyway, so.
Can I make him go through the extra step?
Site plan is, is a lot more excessive than just a lighting plan, is why I'm asking.
And they're not changing anything about it, so it seems like.
But I'm, but right now, well, what, right now, was it a gas station? Or was it a gas station?
No, that's next door.
HVAC thing, anchor.
Well, it's, it's empty now, but.
Yeah, I think they repaired.
Was that a gas station all the time?
Not that I know of. It's behind it.
They were built electrical motors or something.
Yeah. Yeah, they were doing motors and things like that, perhaps I know.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, it would seem to me that the site walk um could, could possibly eliminate the, the request for, for site plan, or maybe it would reinforce your belief that you need one. But I think the, um, we're not changing anything. It's, it's almost better just to, to go out there in person and look around than to look at a, a plan that, uh, you know, it, it, I think you could.
I, I tend to agree with you. Yeah, the site, a site walk would be, in this way, I, I think it's, the problem is we have a residential neighborhood, you know, and there is industrial, it's been industrial for a long time. If it was another company, uh, it would be probably grandfathered, so I don't know. I, that, I'm sorry, I'm leaning towards that. I'll see if I get anybody else from the audience. Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, you guys.
Are you pleased? Here, you have to come up to the podium.
William Parsons, Fifty River Street, I spoke earlier. But if you guys are willing to do a site walk, I would love to have you at my house and look in the backyard, even especially in the dark. You can see that the light now already affects my yard as is. With these enhancements, it's only gonna get worse.
And you'd all be invited to join the walk with us.
Oh, yeah, we will absolutely be there, but I'm just saying, I would love for you guys to come into my backyard and see just how close this is to my dollar swing set.
What we would do is just like we would, we would schedule the site walk here tonight, okay? And then everybody, you know, the, they would say, and they, everyone is invited. It's not a closed thing.
Okay.
So, yes, ma'am.
We have one more.
Uh, Chelsea Madison, sixty-five Harvard Street. Just from a street perspective, I wasn't able to hear a lot of the stuff when we were upstairs. But five, what, industrial-sized trucks an hour on that road is gonna be coming in and out, like from Main Street? Or are they gonna have like a separate entrance that they're gonna use?
Oh, but on Main Street.
It's gonna be all coming onto Main Street?
Yeah, and with the police department has recommended a right turn only.
Oh, right turn, okay.
Not industrial-sized trucks.
Okay, um, we all know that street gets very crowded and very difficult.
It's the worst intersection in the city.
So, so do we expect this to be like beneficial for the street? I mean, again, it's the road infrastructure, right?
Yeah, there's little we can do there.
We did do a traffic study and they determined that there was no.
In February? One month in February is the traffic? Okay, um, I just think that from a s- uh, road infrastructure perspective, this might not be a great idea. If you're, you, yes, you can limit no right-hand turns, but that road is very crowded, very congested. Having large trucks coming in and out, drop-offs, crap.
Problem we have is that the, the police department has come back and says that they recommended a right turn, and they would be okay by them. So that's, so I would have to listen to them sometimes, you know.
Okay, alright.
Not that we don't disagree. I, I, I live on Prospect Street, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I wanted to say too is, um, this is a use which requires a special permit, which does give you the opportunity to impose certain conditions. There could be other uses that are by right, um, and, and I don't know that it's reasonable to expect that the tenant moved out, it's vacant now, and it's gonna remain vacant forever. Uh, and nobody, nobody should use it, uh, you know, for its intended purpose. Because obviously you've got the property or has this property, uh, wants to make productive use of it. Uh, and if it's not, not this applicant, it could be somebody else where perhaps there's, there's no um opportunity to uh you know, come up with some safeguards that uh could address some of the issues that have been raised, as opposed to somebody else just pulling the bill in front of it.
Yeah, typically that's what we'll do, is we'll do a site walk. And from that site walk and talking to the neighbors and talking to them, that, and in fact, they, you know, conditions are uh, you know, some mitigation would be recommended. I have no idea what they are at this time, okay? I also agree with you that this is an industrial park. And uh, there are certain rights, whether being an industrial park, we allow those things be. But being a special permit also gives us, that's the, the advantage of a special permit. It gives the board some latitude to look at things. So that's what we have.
I move to continue, to continue the hearing.
Well, I guess, I guess more people.
So people that wanna talk. Um, good evening, everybody. Sue Schalfo-Zepf from the City Council here in Leamester. A couple of things. That building is in the MU one zone, so it's not specifically an only industrial. MU one, the purpose is to provide the coordinated and mixed development of institutional, business, and/or industrial uses. And Fifty-Sixth River Street, that's zoned Residence A. Not B, not C, it's Residence A.
Yeah, I, I was gonna look it up, but I, offhand, I didn't know. Yeah, Residence A, but that's, that's an anomaly.
It was set up years, no, we didn't set it up, okay? And when, when borders were signed, we tried to not to put residential A next to uh industrial or MU one.
It's commercial and industrial.
We don't do that. But remember, this is historical. Those buildings have been there longer. I've been in town over fifty years and uh those, there's been something there pretty much all that time. So, I, you know, his, and the houses have been there, and they have coexisted. So we're looking for, we may, you know, we're looking for some way to find a solution.
Yeah, and appropriate use. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. I'm really briefly, my name is Carrie Knowsworthy. I'm the Ward Five City Councilor. So I was just gonna request that when you do take a site walk or any of those things, I would love to be invited um, so that I can participate in that and help support the constituents in any way that I can.
True.
Thank you.
We have, um, when we, when we, just for the audience's information, when we schedule sidewalks, it's the same as a meeting. We have to um comply with the open meeting law, so it's open to anyone, anyone who wants to go.
Yeah, it'll be on our site.
But we'll schedule it tonight and it has to be posted on an agenda, just like in the ordinary course of any of our meetings.
Sure, I appreciate that. I just didn't want to miss it, so I was gonna say.
It'll be on our, it'll also be on our webpage.
Okay, and then I'll share that with other constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just make a statement before we continue? My, my whole reason for doing this in part is because Leamester doesn't really have a scrap metal recycling facility right now. Uh, there's one in Pittsburgh, there's one in Worcester, but most of the money that's going from all of this scrap metal. Yes, there, there is a small, yes.
We can't speak from the audience, please.
Let them speak, please.
And so all of the revenue that is going from uh the scrap metal sales is not staying within the city. So part of the reason for doing this is to employ people in the city, have the contractors from Leamester who are doing work in Leamester stay in Leamester, not have to travel an hour back, an hour uh to Worcester and back. Um, and to uh.
We have so close to that.
Yeah, yeah, no, of course. But uh, and to, to, you know, help with the uh, the city and be a benefit to the city. You know, I don't wanna cause anybody harm or, or anything like that and do our best not to.
It's an opportunity for a business, okay? Is it the right opportunity and the right location is what we're trying to determine.
Let me know if you find a better location.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. Liz Macarilla, seventy-five Harvard Street. Um, I just think that, you know, you have the opportunity to require a site plan review, and I don't know why you wouldn't take that opportunity to dig a little deeper and provide some conditions if you do decide to approve this. I think it's just a really powerful tool to make sure that you're reviewing everything that goes into a project like this and the full surroundings. I had to look it up myself because I couldn't remember offhand where we were talking about. And then as soon as I saw it, I thought, oh my God, no. Um, I'm, I've got it on Google Maps on my phone right now. I think, I don't know how we're having this conversation without the map in front of us, because it's so vital to what we're talking about with the river right there and the housing. And a site plan review is gonna show you exactly how much of, how close this is to the river, how much wetlands is all around it. This is an area of the city that flooded catastrophically only two years ago. What happens when it floods at a scrap metal facility? Do we have any recourse for that? There's just a lot of questions we should be asking before we approve something of this magnitude for the city. And I really encourage you to take all of the tools at your disposal and to use them and keep us involved as constituents, because we really care about how our city is being rebuilt. And I hear what you're trying to do for the city, and I'm not saying, you know, that your intentions are, are ill-conceived, but I do wanna have the full conversation and not have it shortchanged. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if I may, one more thing. The other scrap metal place is half a mile.
No, 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 okay.
Right.
It comes to that.
The other scrap metal place is less than a half a mile up the road on the left off of Crawford Street. So it's not in Worcester. It's not a long ways away. And that's where everybody's been going for the last, I don't know, forty years since I did that. Thirty-five years. We've all used it. It's not, it's not, this isn't anything beneficial.
Samari from Fifteen River Street. I've been there for over twenty-three years. And I moved there, it was great. And I do work in Boston. I drive uh for a living. And to be honest with you, you have to live in that street to see the difference that, that has happened during all these twenty-three years. Truck or trailers going through our street at two o'clock in the morning, brrrr. I mean, little kids, you know, and, and all these people don't deserve something like that, to be honest with you. They don't deserve it. I know they're trying to establish a business there and all that. That's okay, but take it somewhere else. You know, it's only half a mile away like, like my neighbors said. You know, it's only two, two steps away from us. We don't need anything like that. And to be honest with you, you have, you guys have to be there twenty-four hours to see what goes on through that street. It's a very busy street. I cannot even come out of my driveway. A lot of times, I almost got killed. And I come out of the car, what are you doing? Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't know. Well, GPS tells you not to take left, but you take left anyway. And I know what you said, that the police are agreeing on coming out of our streets, you cannot take left, you only take right. It, it's not gonna solve the problem. It's not gonna solve it. It is bad as it is, and there is no way, no way that street can accommodate the traffic, the noise, the smell, all this stuff. Please, go twenty-four hours in that street and take a video, whatever you wanna take, whatever you wanna make as a notes, and, and see what happens in that street. Only these people and I know what goes on in that street. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Sue Schalfo-Zepf. I just have one thing to clarify. The right-hand turn, um, John, that you had mentioned earlier, is that when people are coming out of the facility?
Coming out, yeah.
Coming out, right? But in order to get into it, people coming off Route Two.
I think the problem was that they come off Route Two is uh, they have to cross three lanes of traffic.
Right.
Okay, and that second lane is a blocked lane, like a blocked lane, so that the middle lane might be stopped with the inside lane they use to go, and that's where they get the accidents.
Right.
So that's where the, the police department didn't want the left turns. You gotta make the right turn. I, I don't know what their accommodations are, but that's what we have in documentation.
Okay, I was just confused.
I mean, yeah, yeah, we have an answer for Route Thirteen. Okay, it's, yeah, we replaced the bridge, you know, and make it wider. But that ain't gonna happen either. We saw, there was a plan, I actually did see a plan many, many years ago. They were gonna do a flyover there. And it was only gonna be a hundred million dollars. So money can solve everything.
Paul Guy, I live on Seventy-one River Street. Um, I understand this gentleman, what he's trying to do. I am a builder contractor, so I'm kinda familiar with the scrap metal. And um, there is a big facility in Leamester, when facility there, and they open early in the traffic before they open. It's, it's a street that it's, no cars go there, just the people for this facility, and the line is extremely big. and the line is extremely big. So, my concern is at 7:00 in the morning, that these people say they're gonna open. Before they open, actually, all these people that wanna sell their scrap metal to them, what's gonna happen with Main Street? Because everybody, are you gonna have a gate right at the beginning? I mean, do you have a site, you really need to put, I think, a little more effort into it, and put a site plan? Because you're saying you're not doing anything about it?
I think.
But you're actually, you should concern the traffic. I think that's one of the main things. 7:00 in the morning, everybody going to work, that's like rush hour. So, before that, there was people already gonna be parked on the side of the street? How is that gonna work with traffic?
I think it, you know, school buses and. What were you referencing? What other location?
When?
On Tansier Drive, 200 Tansier Drive.
On Tansier, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that's an industrial road.
That's very separate.
And that's recycled materials, and that's the recycled trucks, those are the big trucks. And they're gonna take trash, they're just metal, they take everything there.
I see what you're saying, and then, like, big cars coming in, trailer trucks, I drive trailer trucks. So, to make that turn the other way around, five trucks in and out, I mean, I even know the wind trap's still building, how that is, and it's on facility that location by houses, and people not happy with it either.
Correct.
I'm just, I think they should at least put a little more effort and do a site plan, spend a little more money, improve the area, you know, something.
Okay.
Something to continue, but at least they can bring it up with the plan for this.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. Thanks.
Can I have anyone else?
I'll say something real quick.
Our last one was.
Haley Brady, too, in Harvard Street. I get it, but until we fix the infrastructure in North Leominster, the, you know, bridge widening, the absolute disaster of a nightmare that traffic situation is, can we just leave North Leominster alone? Until we get some better.
That's not an option, I'm sorry.
You know, I have to, you know, far be it for me to say, I've never reviewed a plan like this before, because there's always a first for everything, because I'm trying to think of all the years that we've been on the board, that we, with a special permit without a site plan?
Oh, no.
No.
So, I'm just, I mean, and I'm just saying this, I'm looking at, I understand the planning, the building inspector said they didn't need a site plan, so I'm not putting this on, on the applicant at all. But I'm reading the ordinance, and it says, under site plan approval, I'm not gonna read, I'm gonna just read what I think is, and I don't think I'm reading this out of context. A site plan approval from the planning board is required where a new use or expansion of an existing use will result in any one or more of the following, and it's 10 or more parking spaces, an increase of new parking spaces, an increase of parking spaces of 25% or more, a creation of 10,000 square feet of new gross floor area, more than one building on a lot. Again, none of these apply to this particular applicant, but I'm reading the, and then the fifth one is, any business that will utilize a drive-through facility or window doesn't apply. But the last one says, a change of use classification on a lot. So, that's why I, I think, I mean, I, again, I don't, I'm just, I'm a old follower. You heard with, you heard me with Mr. Bavensi, and, and I'll talk about that when we get to it under the, under the regular meeting, but this says a change of use classification on a lot, and if that, unless somebody tells me that means something different, I just think, I think we should, we need a site plan, even though it may not be in the table of uses, but not every, not everything under the table of uses will be listing an SPA. But that's why I'm thinking, and the reason, and you asked earlier, sir, why do you think, what would become of that? I guess I would like to see, when the trucks come in, what's going to be the flow of the trucks? The turning radiances of the trucks? Where they're going to stop? Where is it, where's the entrance going to be of where they're going to go in? Is the truck going to go into the building? Where are you going to, I understand you're not gonna have any new parking spaces, but with these trucks there, is it gonna change where the snow's going to be plowed? Is it gonna have to be moved off-site, depending upon how many trucks are there? So, you asked earlier, what advantage would there be if we had a site plan? And I, those are, I'm just naming just some, just off the top of my head, and I think there's certainly going to be more. How long are the trucks going to be there? Where are the truck drivers going to be located? Where's, where, you know, where your office is going to be inside of the facility? That's why I think we need a site plan, and I think it's because it's a change of use of what it currently is.
Change of use.
So, that's the reason, and honestly, and so that's the reason, I don't wanna sit here and say, I've never reviewed a project that was only a special permit.
Special permit without a site plan.
Without a site plan, but maybe there has been, but I think in these circumstances, I think we need one. And frankly, as you can see, you're getting a lot of, I don't wanna use the word opposition, you're getting a lot of comments and feedback from neighbors, and even people who don't live in the area, but it's still Main Street in Leominster where they travel. And so, they may not have standing in terms of a litigation, but they do have, in my opinion, standing in the city of Leominster to speak whether in favor or opposed to it. So, I think, if you actually had a site plan, you may assuage some of their concerns if you have a site plan that shows all of those concerns that at least I have, or questions that I have on the site plan, and it may actually be to your benefit in the long run as well. So, I mean, I'm all for, I'm all for a site visit, and we can schedule that in the meantime, and maybe they can do it. I don't wanna use the word simple site plan, but maybe a, you know, one that has everything that is required with, you know, in the, in the normal course of the elements of the ordinance. So, that's the reason I'm making that request.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond briefly? Just in terms of, a site plan's not gonna change the location of River Street, or the topography, or it's not gonna change Main Street. I understand all of that, and, you know, there's, we are using existing conditions, and I think maybe when you do a site visit, you can see for yourself. And I do think, you know, typically, the site plan is when, you know, it's an open field, or it's something where there's nothing on it, and you can't, that's all you, all you can do is look at a plan, but when it's already constructed and it's there, it just seems that, some of the objections that we're getting, I don't think anyone necessarily cares about how the trucks are gonna turn around on the property. They're gonna be more concerned about, you know.
That's your judgment. The thing is, we're looking at, it's a prerogative, okay? We looked at it, and then, and we said, the site, a site plan would give us, you know, flows, it would give us traffic, turning movements, it would give us how close you are, and maybe there are some mitigations. Even the conservation said that, you know, it was brought up as the flood. And I know we're going through a whole thing with FEMA, as far as the flooding in the city, and the whole change in our floodplains. So, we know that's happening, and you're right on the river, so we know that's gonna, there's a good potential of trouble there. And we don't know what's gonna happen, we don't know it won't happen. But if I can get a chance, I wanna help, I, this board, we try to not only help the business guy, we do that, but also we have to mitigate, okay, the neighbors, that are people that exist that have lived there in the area. And the change, it is a change of use. I mean, in a broad sense, it's industrial, industrial. But you went from a company who repaired motors inside their building, or air conditioning units, whatever they did, and there was little or nothing outside. Whereas, you are gonna have some things outside, if nothing else, you have the storage trailers. So.
Could we start with the site visit, and then?
We can.
Before we jump right to the site plan, because if, you may do your site visit and say, I think, people may think to themselves that this is doable, or they might say, it's never gonna work, so we just don't wanna provide a site plan.
But, but so how, so can you, can you, how do you reconcile what I just read? What's your definition of?
My definition is.
Change of use classification on a lot?
I would ask the building inspector that, that was their determination. Off the top of my head, I would need to look at it a little bit more closely, but I understand that that was the recommendation, because the site plan, there is a site plan, it already exists.
We don't have it.
If we're going to.
It exists for the property.
No, but for the use. The use is, it's a grandfather situation, which is allowed to continue. It's not a new proposal.
If we're gonna do the site visit, which we, it sounds like everybody is in agreement we should do.
Yep.
And they're willing to wait and see what our judgment is after that point, then why not do that first? And if you still want a site plan, we can check with the building inspector, we can check with legal counsel if we want, and we can still require it.
Oh, yeah.
But let's take the first step, because he's right. You might look at it and say, there's nothing here that's gonna work, let's not spend any more time, and make them spend any more money, or you might be satisfied, saying, let's see it and go.
Okay, let's, do you wanna schedule it now?
Good call.
Let's, let's.
Well, is there anyone else? They knew anyone else was to speak.
Two cents. Sorry, Brett Moses, Edward Circle. I would think.
To us.
We are go, as you all know, we are all going through this, a similar situation, kind of. I would think that they would want to give a site plan to you and to the residents, to let the residents know that they actually care about how they feel. Right? So, nobody cares how, where the truck's gonna turn around. Yes, they do, because you have to know. I would just think that, I'm listening to them, and I don't feel that he wants to do a site plan, and I think that he should, just to appease the people that are bothered by here. So, that's it.
Wait, wait, oh, wait, sorry.
I was saying that we wanna address all the concerns, we're just not sure that the concerns that are raised are going to be addressed in a site plan. So, at the site visit, we're happy to answer any questions, show you around, say trucks are coming here, and we're gonna take deliveries here, and here's where the dumpsters are gonna go, and we're gonna meet this setback from the river and such. I'm just not sure that some of these answers, that some of these questions can be answered by a site plan.
Excellent. All right, we're gonna continue until when?
Well, that's, that's what my.
November 3rd?
What's?
You'd have a sidewalk, it's gonna have to be prior to November 3rd.
Is there a, is there a time limit to do that, Elizabeth?
A sidewalk?
Yeah.
I have to.
And advertising, we want to advertise it, we just put it on our website.
We post it, we advertise it in an agenda, we post the agenda on the website, we post the agenda in City Hall.
Okay, so that's 48 hours. Well, we want to do more.
Correct, we have to, well, we would post it much sooner than that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, November 3rd, 6:30?
That would be for the public hearing, on the special.
We have to continue the hearing first, and then let our new business.
No, 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 we, and we'll continue that the site work would have to be prior to our next, when we schedule the hearing.
But don't we have to continue the hearing before we take action?
But I, but for the, out of courtesy of these residents, some of them wanna leave, why don't we schedule it now? I mean, they can find out when it is, but some, especially the direct to butters may, I wanna make sure they're available.
Okay, what date do you wanna do?
November 3rd is the early days.
You want to do an evening meeting?
Well, we don't wanna, I know.
Remember, it's dark.
Can't be this weekend, Labor Day weekend.
It's dark, it's 6:30, 7:00, it's dark.
It would have to be a 6:00 thing.
Yes, 6:30, 6:25 is sunset.
For a site plan change, it's 6:00.
But you want to do it before, the first weekend in November, too, because of the hour change in time.
Do I do it, do it Saturday?
This is a really hard, don't schedule around me, this is a really hard time. It's not, it's just not that, I have to record stuff every.
Is a Saturday the best time?
No, let's do it during the week. Let's get it, you know, so we get at least an hour.
Do you wanna do it on Monday?
No.
No?
Monday's awful, no matter what. I don't even work on Mondays.
Thursday, we're working on that, so maybe the 30th of October.
That's a kinda late.
The 22nd, Wednesday, the 22nd?
Yeah.
Wednesday, October 22nd?
How about the 24th?
What time, what time are people home? What time are, what time are the River Street residents home? Where's the young man?
Do you wanna do a race?
Did they leave?
He had to leave, his wife was on call, and he has to watch the baby. But I can relay, if you tell me, I can.
What, what time is a good time? Is it, like, I mean, can we do it at 5:00?
5:30, so we got an hour.
How about 5:30?
I suggest to do it during the day when it's daylight.
Right, so 5:00 would be a good time.
5:00 is, if we do it.
Because sunset is at 6:20, 6:25.
How about the 21st? The Tuesday.
I can't do the 21st.
We have the 22nd at 5:00.
Why don't we all submit our schedules, and then we'll just coordinate?
Yeah, no, so why don't we just put a date?
That would happen.
Yeah, we'll have to set a date now, and then.
Set it as October 22nd at 5:15.
22nd?
October 22nd. Yeah, 5:15.
5:15, okay.
Show them if you got them, right?
Does that work for you?
So, people can show up if they have enough notice, and we're getting, you know, 5:15 is, you know, after normal, well, not for some people, but 5:15 is after work hours for most. Let's do that. Then we have an hour light.
What's that?
That would be the River Street coming to my neighbor's yard, possibly my yard.
Well, we go to the property itself.
We'll meet at the site first, and then we can.
And then we'll determine.
At the site.
Well, I don't think.
I don't think they'll walk over.
But I can imagine them saying.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They don't take a boat to the other side of the street.
It's shallow.
Walk over.
It's a long way down, though.
I see.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. You know, at 5:15.
Second.
I got a motion made for 5:30?
5:15.
About 5:15? I get me confused here. October 22nd at 5:15, at 4:88.
That's a sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
You know, I mean, if it was me, I would've done both together, put a site plan in, and at the time the sidewalk was scheduled, because chances are, we may need to do a site plan anyway.
Well, let's look at it.
And plus, we're gonna ask, let's ask KP what that section by.
Okay. So, I have a motion made and seconded to continue this hearing.
So, November 3rd, 6:30.
Yep, that's the hearing.
The hearing.
For the hearing?
For the special permit.
That's November 3rd. No, no, not the sidewalk, guys. November 3rd is the hearing.
It's the hearing.
It's continued, too. So, we're gonna continue this hearing to November 3rd. Prior to the hearing being continued, we're gonna do the sidewalk on October 22nd at 5:15.
But see, we address that later on in our meeting.
4:88 Main Street.
So, okay. We just wanted, we did that in advance. So, it's continued. Okay, so the, the hearing is continued.
Do I have a motion in second, please?
What's that?
I mean, we did that, call me.
That was, that was for the second. Let's move to continue until the 3rd.
Yeah, there we go.
Motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye, most say no, motion carries.
So, you got the dates right?
Yes.
October 22nd, 5:15.
October 22nd at 5:15, the next meeting is November 3rd.
3rd.
6:30. In this room or in that room?
Probably this room.
Probably this room.
All right, can we, can we worry about that later, come on, let's move on, 6:40 meeting is 10:09.
Yeah, 6:40. Open public hearing, definitive subdivision application for 68 Liberty Street, map, 143 Poxell, 187, Liberty Street Extension Subdivision.
Thank you.
In front of the camera.
Thank you for the note, Elizabeth, so.
Chris, I don't think that helps us a lot. Maybe if you can, like, slant it a little this way? Oh, we have a plan, we have a plan, let's look.
Yeah, I got a plan, yeah.
We don't have a small one, right?
All right, I got a big one.
Can you get a small one?
I don't have a small one. Where are you?
Did you open it, I didn't quite hear?
I have not opened it, yeah, I did, I thought I did, no, I didn't, yeah, I did. Open public hearing, different subdivision application on 68 Liberty Street, map, 143 Poxell, 187, Liberty Street Extension. Yes, I did open it, but that's all right.
Stephanie, correct me, I'm sorry. First person, Chris Anderson, with hand in the jury, here behalf of Eleanor and Avery Miller III, looking to do a definitive subdivision plan along a part of a private portion of Liberty Street, so I apologize, I can't really see the plan too well, but we have a currently partially approved right-of-way of Liberty Streets, effectively, there's a corner in the right-of-way, everything that is southbound of that is considered public per DPW, with the northerly portion going towards the BJ wholesale facility being private. The intent of the applicant is to provide frontage to the property along Liberty Street in order to construct a future building at some point down the line, and due to Section 22-11.3 of zoning ordinance, definitive subdivision is required for a private way, a, an approved way, if you will. As such, we're before you tonight, currently, the existing paved and public portion of Liberty Street averages around 27, 27 and a half feet, there is an existing paved portion of Liberty Street that extends down to the BJ facility, as provided as a secondary means of egress, for, I believe, emergency purposes, but that being said, it's the intent to effectively widen it and make it more consistent with the subdivision regulations, as such, we're proposing to extend it to 28 feet, and it will kind of blend into the existing limits of pavement, and then from there, we will be grading it off following the existing topography in order to maintain that means of egress. Additional improvements will include the extension of the sewer main along Liberty Street in order to provide additional sewer infrastructure if the building proposed on the property ever needs it. Because this is a more of a unique situation where it is an existing right-of-way, we're requesting several waivers, if the board would like, I can run through those real quick. We're requesting a waiver for Section 8.2.1F of the definitive plan requirements, AKA the water plan, there's no water infrastructure within the public portion of Liberty Street, so we don't need to extend the water main, so we're requesting waiver for providing that plan by default. Section 9.8 sidewalks and bicycles, it's requested that we not construct the sidewalk along the, the portion of Liberty Street, because there's no existing sidewalks within Liberty Street to begin with, so it would be a redundant feature. Section 9. M trees and plantings, it's proposed to not necessarily plant any additional trees, there is an existing forest, rough forest area along the perimeter of the roadway, so it's kind of already kind of doing that, so we're requesting-
They're not going to cut that, Chris, they're not going to-
There will be some cutting in that area, just to get the shoulders to work, but the majority of that's going to remain intact. Section 9. Q, streetlights. Sorry, I apologize, so we are proposing, or eventually, in the eventuality that that property ever gets developed, there would be, have to be new overhead wiring in order to get the power to the site, if it's at that point in time that it's deemed necessary, we'll go through the appropriate measures to install the streetlights. Design, Section 9. R.3. D, there's design standards for streets, it's proposed that we not construct a turnaround area due to the existing nature of the right-of-way, it's dead ends, and this roadway will primarily serve the existing facility, and it's still used as the means of egress for the BJ facility as well. 9. R.3. E, it's proposed to have a slope greater than 2% for the last 100 feet of the roadway, due to the nature of the existing condition, we are trying to maintain that existing slope in order to maintain access to the BJ facility, this results in about a 6% slope towards the rear, last portion of the right-of-way, so that would be in excess technically of the 2% criteria. Section 9. R.3. F is again requesting a relief from the turnaround area due to the paper street condition of the site. Section 9. R.7, requesting relief to allow for the centerline of the paved driveway not to coincide with the centerline of the right-of-way of the road, just to maintain the existing limits of pavement coming through the majority of the right-of-way. 9. R.14. F, the sidewalks, again, there's no existing sidewalks within Liberty Street, so it would be a redundant feature, and 9. R.14. G, curving and shoulders, currently there's no curbing or, along Liberty Street, we're proposing to maintain that condition and provide a grass shoulder instead. So, with that being said, those are the requests that we initially came, come up with, I know during review, there were a couple additional items that we had overlooked that would probably be more advantageous for this decision as well, that was provided in the planning review memo from Elizabeth Wood. That being said, that's the general intent of the project at this point in time, if there's any questions from the board, I'll be wanting to answer them.
So, what I understand here is, you're creating a lot on a unaccepted road.
There is an existing lot on an unaccepted-
Yeah, I was, I did the sidewalk on this one, but the building that you show in your drawings is, is or isn't going to be built?
It will in the future be built, it's the intent of the applicant to use that as a storage building for their equipment.
Okay.
But the application in front of you tonight is just for the definitive subdivision roadway, at this point.
Okay, so you're, you're dealing with creation of a lot, but not the, not the building itself?
Correct.
Okay.
So, for all disclosure, we did model the building in the paved areas for drainage purposes only, to provide compliance with the subdivision regulations, because we still have to provide some means of storm art management, the way the site naturally grades currently, it's intended to maintain that grading.
Right.
So, inherently, it gets onto our site, and it will be maintained through an underground storage system.
That was the only, that was the concern I had, is being, normally showing a building that we're not approving a building.
Yes, so-
So, I want to request probably that something be noted on this building, this plan, that the building is, for reference only, I don't know what would the, the property, you know, designate, designation would be for that.
I understand where you're going with it, so we can add note to the plan that the approval of the subdivision plan does not adhere-
Yeah, because I didn't want anybody could be looking at this five years from now and say, hey, they already approved that building for that site, okay, and, and then go along, you know, so, it was just sort of safeguard of some kind, yeah, it's there, and it shows how a building could be put on the site, and it's a relatively large site, so, I would, you know, on the drawing, the building is, is for reference only, or something like that.
Ah, this rendering.
Ah, this rendering, yeah, maybe, I don't know. What's that? Yeah, well, after, anybody from the, uh, final board?
It's only the DPW who we had a comment.
Yeah.
Oh, in my director's report, I had 12 items, some waivers were already requested from, some you would probably need a waiver from.
Correct, so, before, like, I can go through Mrs. Wood's comments that we believe we would also be extending the waiver request to.
Oh, I took, okay, that was the list of waivers you gave us, right?
That was the first, yeah, that was the first time we requested that we came up with, and Mrs. Wood pointed out additional ones, that we, or additional items that we're missing that would warrant a waiver request. So, starting off on the findings, paragraph, if you will, we'd be looking to request a waiver from Section 8.1.1, the definitive impact statement with the Board of Health, we're extending the sewer line down to the development, or towards the property, if you will, so it would be the means of providing municipal sewer to the property, and we would be able to install a domestic well on the property as well for water supply. We would request a waiver from Section 8.2.8.4, relative to the plans being at a 140 horizontal scale and a 108 vertical, the plans as shown are shown at a 120, just due to size of the lot and the development area, so we would request a waiver just to make it, the plans more legible and agreeable. Section 8. C.1. E, that's a requirement for additional testing along the roadway to confirm subsurface conditions, the site is located in a sand, a very sandy area, so we would expect that that would be consistent, and we would be, we would look to DPW for confirmation if that's acceptable, in addition to that, we're not doing any significant cuts and fills in the area, so the road is maintained at its current state effectively, we're just kind of smoothing it out, making it more current engineering design, if you will. Section 9. I, that all subdivisions be required to provide a central mail delivery system, we're only providing access to a single lot, so it would be truly not necessary, we would be creating a whole mail system for the entire region, if you will. We would request a specific relief from Section 9. M2 for the required street trees, we kind of requested that waiver indirectly, but this is another section that we just extend that request to. And Sections 9. R.14. I, street trees being required, would extend to that as well.
What about 9. R.14. H, number 11?
So, we're, we're, we can make additional notes to call that out, but it's already being provided with the grass shoulder, so that would be, that's already kind of shown on the plant side as well. And that was, that was the last of those additional waiver requests.
16, I have 16 waivers, count them.
16, for George?
Yeah, 10 that the applicant proposed and six that, to my staff report.
And in addition to that, there was a, a other comment, section, or comment number three relative to the signature block being added to the plan, we would provide the board a BIOR plan with that signature block, so it could be recorded with the registered deeds.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, the first is Police Department would like a traffic study, if they intend to increase their business or level of traffic in the neighborhood, please provide and periodically update contact information for any owners or managers who would respond in the event of an alarm or other emergency. Yeah. Building approves. Conservation says there's nothing on the site which grants them jurisdiction, DPW. Other restrictions and easements mentioned in the deed still in effect, will the private section of Liberty Street be brought up for street acceptance, if so, does the applicant have clear title to transfer, how will the proposed building be serviced for water and sewer? Fire approves, accessory approves, health, as well as approved under Section 8.2. F, a health department permit is required, is the project on city sewer, what will this building be used for?
Yeah, that's right, there is no building.
So, I'll start with DPW, the restrictions and easements, as referenced in that booking page, are still in effect, so they do have to follow that, I believe at this point in time, it's not the intent to bring it up to street acceptance, so it will remain like that, or as proposed, and the building will be serviced by public sewer and private water.
There's no water in that area?
There is the ability to put a well on the property, yes. And that would, and that would conform with the requirements of the Board of Health and their well regulations.
Okay. What you wish, do I have me?
Motion to close the hearing.
Do we have the audience?
Audience, audience, do I have anyone in the audience who wants to comment on this project? Oh, that's one more time, do I have anyone in the audience? Okay.
Motion to close the hearing.
Got a motion made and seconded to close the hearing, any discussion? Here now the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye, opposed, say no, motion carries.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Continued open public city council petition, 3-26, Lendy and Executive Director want to choose a regional planning commission, request amendment zoning ordinance to replace Article 15 accessory apartments with a new Article 15 that complies with recently passed state law, make other changes to implement the new ordinance.
Chair, we have correspondence on this, from the MRPC, this is from Joseph Boyle, I'm ready to request a continuance of the public hearing for accessory dwelling unit zoning amendments to allow the city solicitor's office to review and outstanding legal issue regarding application of law enforcement setback regulations and to detach IDUs.
So, move.
Thank you for the consideration.
I move to continue the hearing until November 3rd at 6:35.
That's open.
Second.
So, November 3rd at 6?
35.
35. Motion made and seconded to continue the hearing to November 3rd at 6:35, any discussion? Here now the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye, opposed, say no, motion carries. Call to honor.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser. South Chaconne. Kermit Torio South.
Here.
Tom McAdams, Kerrigan, excuse, Jason Curry.
Here.
Dean Bayer.
Here.
John Souza.
Yep, minutes, July 21st, 2025.
I move to approve.
Forty pages, everybody.
Second, hold on, minutes, they're in transcript.
Motion made and seconded, that we all read- Motion made in seconded, do we all read every word?
Sure.
I've looked it through it, too.
I did. Uh, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and now, the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. August 18th, 2025. Minutes.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made in seconded to approve. Any discussion? Here and now, the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries.
Stay.
Plan submitted.
You have stayed?
Site-
I wasn't here.
That's fine.
Site plan application for 29 June Street, map-
Uh, quick question about the site, uh-
The minutes, the minutes on July 21st? We heard back here, someone said it's not minutes, it's a transcript. Is that true?
No.
No.
Okay, just following up the knowledge. Thank you.
Just very lengthy.
All right.
If you want to take a peek.
We do, is it public?
Is that public?
Oh, let's give it to him.
You're welcome.
Okay, site plan application for 29 June Street, map 352, parcel 6, multifamily development.
I recommend we move this to November 17th at 6:30.
November 17th.
This is the assistance on this.
6:30? Okay. Multifamily development on June Street.
I thought we, no, I thought we-
No, this is new one.
What just happened to June Street?
June Street.
That's what I'm doing now.
This one should be 11:30.
3.1, site plan application.
So what do we say, November what?
November 17th.
November 17th at 6:30.
6:30.
So moved.
Motion made in seconded for site plan application for November 17th at 6:30. Any discussion?
No, seriously.
We're going- We have other items that have deadlines.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. Special permit application use for 29 June Street, map 352, parcel 6, multifamily development. And November 17th, 6:35?
What, 6:31?
Oh, 6:31. Okay, we'll open up at the same time. Any discussion?
Nope.
Here and now, the call, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. Special permit application, water supply protection district for Peterson Street, map 548, parcel 18, house and watershed protection.
We have 11:17 at 6:35?
Let's do it. Yep, second. So moved. One second.
6:35?
Yep.
I have a motion made in second schedule for November 17th at 6:35. Any additions, any questions? Here and now, the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. Site plan application for 29 New Lancaster Road, map 447, parcel 2E, professional office parking, professional office parking.
We have 6:40 on November 17th.
So moved, second.
November 17th.
That's a lot of stuff.
I have a motion made in seconded from November 17th at 6:40. Any additions, to leach, to, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. Preliminary subdivision application, Ossie Hill Park Drive, extension, proposed road extension, map 369, block 1, lots 2, 3, and 4, map 386, block 4, lots 1C, 3, and 5, map 463, lot 11.
We have November 3rd at 6:40.
November 3rd.
Why are we doing November 3rd?
Because we have a 45-day scheduling requirement for preliminary subdivision, so that one has to be sooner.
Okay, so moved, second.
I have a motion made in seconded, any discussion?
Can I ask?
Here and now, the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. 3.6 preliminary subdivision application, Pioneer Drive, proposed road extension, map 369, block 1, lots 1A, 1M, 1B, map 386, block 4, lot 2F. Scheduled-
We have 6:45 on November 3rd.
November 3rd. 6:45. I have a motion made in, it's in second for November 3rd at 6:45. Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. Opened the city council petition, 3-36, Lend Eaton Executive Director, Montezuma Regional Planning Commission, request to amend zoning ordinance to replace Article 15 accessory apartments with a new Article 15 that complies with recently passed state law and make other changes to implement the new ordinance. This has been continued.
Nice.
New business, site plan application for 10:30 Central Street, map 317, parcel Pine Hill 2, assisted living facility.
Motion to approve.
Are there any waivers?
Any waivers or any-
What are waivers?
Any department head, conditions?
Hold on.
We did, so my motion for approval containing any department head comments-
Well, some of the comments in my report include landscaping requirements, lighting requirements, um-
Are there waivers, who is that?
The waivers were not requested. These are items that are required by site plan.
Wasn't there a waiver on landscaping?
We have a waiver request, right?
Yeah.
Oh, we have one waiver request, and that's from the plan requiring a landscape plan by a licensed landscape architect.
So we have to go on the waiver first?
But there are other landscaping requirements that aren't that, that are in my report.
But they're not asked, asking for waivers.
That they did not request waivers for, yes.
So let's do a waiver, a motion to approve the waiver for landscaping plan by a professional architect, landscape architect.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion made in seconded to accept a waiver, not to require a landscape architect.
Now make a motion to approve-
All in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries.
Now make a motion to approve the project with any department head comments coordinated and incorporated into the plan.
Can I add a dumpster?
Then add a dumpster.
Subject to department.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Yep.
I think it's a beautiful thing, could have used it five years ago.
Motion.
We all could use it.
You speak for yourself depending on who the, who agrees with what definition.
We have a motion made in seconded.
I'll just add a comment, I know.
Motion in seconded, okay, to accept the, the plan for 8 Pine Hill, 2 assisted living facility with waivers and conditions from the department head, department head conditions. Any further discussion on this matter? Here and now, the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. Special permit application for 488 Main Street, map 241, parcel 1, scrap metal recycling. This has been continued. 5.3 definitive subdivision application, 68 Liberty Street, map 143, parcel 1, 87 Liberty Street, extension subdivision, had a number of waivers.
16 waivers.
Can we, unless there's some, can we take them in block unless people have the issues with them?
Yep.
Just make a list and take them in block.
I have a motion to take the waivers in block?
Yeah, that's my question.
Okay, and do I have a second to that motion? I have a second. So on the waivers in block, any discussion? Here and now, the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. There was one additional condition that the building marked is, I don't know.
Future.
What's that?
Future.
User?
Future.
User?
Future.
Future, okay.
One more?
Back to the future.
I don't, I don't understand that, but-
Well, no, that's a building, I just wanted to confuse-
I know, I don't, I understand your, I don't understand-
Why, say it.
I don't know.
The site plan requirements require that you put any proposed, or the subdivision requirements require that you put proposed buildings.
It's like, I have a site plan, I, earlier I had a, a building with no site plan and now I have a site plan with no building.
No, there's a building, for the record, building engineer, there is a building. The, the reason we included the building on the plan was because that played into the drainage calculations for the site development including the roadway. So we know, we know it's not part of subdivision approval. It doesn't technically need site plan approval, it just needs a building permit, but the idea was to make sure that it complied with the drainage requirements of, of the project along with the city ordinance regarding storm art. That was the reason, or the rationale.
Well, he's just parking trucks there, no?
Correct.
Okay. I have that motion, do I have a second on that?
Do I tell we have?
No.
Yes, second.
Okay, motion made, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. Liberty Street with waivers, all in favor? I need a motion.
Waivers in department head comments, right?
And with department head comments, right?
Yep.
I have a motion made in seconded, all in favor, say aye. All say no, motion carries. Communications done, direction report.
I have nothing extra to add.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.